Good evening. The April 4th, 2022 Legislative Meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. And we're going to pause for a moment for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm actually going to give the invocation, and I just ask that everyone in the room take a moment of silent recognition, or whatever your faith might lead you to, in memory of those many, many lives lost in the horrible atrocities in the town of Busha in Ukraine this weekend. And I ask you now to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, please read the Ethics Statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you. We will now open our invitation to audience. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communications on any subject not included on the printed agenda that we received from any members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, we did receive three submissions through the online testimony tool that went to the entire council. It's been added to the record. It's included in the summary that is posted online as well.
Thank you. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. We actually did not have anyone sign up for our invitation to audience, but if there is anyone here who would like to address the council on an item not on our agenda, you may come to the table at this time. If you would like. Is this possibly on an agenda item, though?
Yes.
Okay. We will have you back. All right. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the council member for the First District, which includes the Western District of our police officers, I'd like to take a moment to recognize some heroism over the past weekend from Lieutenant Tillman and Officer Ballard. On Friday, April 1st, at 9:15 PM, an officer was on patrol in Severn Danza Park when he heard a crash in his immediate vicinity. He discovered a vehicle had lost control on Donaldson Avenue and went off the road through trees and a fence before becoming half submerged in a drainage pond in the park. The vehicle was taking on water with occupants trapped inside. The supervisor and an officer, without hesitation, leapt into action to conduct a water rescue of the four occupants, including a nine-month-old and a three-year-old child. Officers had to break the passenger windows of the vehicle to gain access inside. They carried the children to safety and returned to rescue the adults. Aside from being cold and wet, everyone involved was unharmed. And I got notice of this along with a video, which, if you'd like, I'll forward you the video, but I got tears in my eyes when they rescued these little kids, so I just wanted to extend our appreciation and recognition to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lacy. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved. Allison Pickard.
Second, Councilman Brucey.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of March 21st, 2022.
The meeting was called to order by Chair Radveen at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Councilmember Amanda Fiedler, and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Cub Scout PAC 727 of Arnold, Maryland. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Indianapolis, Maryland. There were approximately 100 persons in the audience.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 21st, 2022?
So moved. Allison Pickard.
Is there a second?
Second, Councilman Brucey.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of March 21st, 2022 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the title of any bills to be introduced this evening.
An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Residential Districts' Requirements for Conditional Uses Townhouses.
Just one, all right. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 722. Resolution Recognizing National Therapy Animal Day in Anarundel County.
And only one resolution, all right. Could I actually request a motion to vote on Resolution Number 7-22 out of order and first this evening?
So moved. Lacy.
Is there a second?
Second. Allison Pickard.
Thank you. We have a motion to vote on Resolution Number 7-22 first this evening. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Brucey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to vote on Resolution Number 722 out of order this evening is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Resolution Number 7-22.
Resolution Number 722. Resolution Recognizing National Therapy Animal Day in Anarundel County.
Thank you. So I brought forward this resolution at the request of a constituent, and I was pleased to do so as an animal lover, but also in appreciation for the amazing impact that therapy animals can have on our lives, on the lives of seniors, on the lives of those in the hospital receiving care, those in hospice care, and really, anyone. So at this time, I would like to invite Ginger, the, I guess we'll call Mom of Otis, who is our therapy animal, who's representing therapy animals, to come forward. And I guess before we vote on the resolution, do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Would you like to take a seat?
Sure. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. I'm really excited to see this resolution. Initially, these folks reached out to me, and I wanted to make sure that they went to the appropriate council member. I'm excited that this is being introduced. Our service dogs do an incredible job for any person that needs someone to just sit by them, calm them, and lower that anxiety level. And Otis, I totally understand stage fright. You're doing a great job.
Thank you for recording.
Any other comments or questions from my colleagues? And I will just say, I would love to have, in my day job, I'm a public school teacher. I mention that a lot here. I would love to have Otis come and hang out with my students. I know some of my students could really use a therapy animal these days. It's been a rough few years. Rough.
You have my email address. He and his sister are going through training, and we're focusing on isolated seniors, but school kids and young readers as well, so.
That's wonderful. That's wonderful. And I think everyone in the room probably feels a little bit better, unless you have allergies. My apologies, but.
It's an allergy for it.
An allergy for everyone. Everyone feels better. All right. Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 7-22.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Brucey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Madam Secretary, could you please add me as a cosponsor? An aye?
Noted. Thank you. Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 722 is adopted.
And thank you so much to Ginger and Otis for representing therapy animals for our county today. And the actual day to be honoring therapy animals is April 30th, so keep that in mind. Keep those animals in mind when we get to the 30th of April. Thank you again so much.
Thank you all. I appreciate it. Have a great night.
You too. All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8-22 as amended.
Bill Number 822. An Ordinance Concerning Zoning 2022 Green Infrastructure Master Plan.
All right. This is an admin bill. Mr. Barron, I can see your team is coming on down. You have the floor when you are ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me is our Environmental Policy Director, Matt Johnston. I have Christina Pampa and Michael Stringer from OPZ, Erica Matthews from Wreckin' Parks, and Laurie Blair-Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. We also have our OPZ Director in the audience if there are any questions. So we've talked about this bill several times. Just as a reminder, the plan sets up a framework for voluntary actions to conserve the largest connected natural areas in the county, as well as investing in green space in underserved communities. Let's pass this bill tonight. Thank you.
All right. Are there any questions from my colleagues? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 8-22 as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, we did receive one submission ahead of time that went to the entire council. It's been, excuse me, added to the record. It's also included in the summary that is posted on our website.
Thank you. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill Number 8-22 as amended. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. We did not have anyone sign up in advance, but if there is anyone here who wishes to speak, you may come up to the table and state your name and address for the record at this time on Bill Number 8-22. Good evening. I think that's Mr. Wadi under the mask and hat.
Definitely. It's me.
You may proceed. You have two minutes.
Hello. My name is Stephen Wadi. I live in Severn, Maryland. This bill was advertised as adding, if passed, adding $10,000 to $20,000 property value for those properties that may be next to a green space. And being that housing is exponentially, the price and cost of housing is exponentially increased in the past day, let alone the past two years, I hope that the council will have the opportunity to offset some of that cost that people are going to have to pay because it's pricing out so many people from being able to access this county, let alone any other housing in the area. I'm a Realtor and a property manager, and I see it every day. I see Realtors dropping out of the field because the prices have gone up so high and people cannot afford, and the loans that they're receiving are not matching the prices. And as you all probably know, people are paying $100,000, $200,000, a million dollars on top of the price that they're receiving, that they're offering, in order to get the house. So I've been to Crofton. I submitted like 10 offers on various houses in Crofton for a single mother, and all were rejected because they did not reach, and this was a two-bedroom, 1,000-foot condo that was $250,000. And I can imagine the green space that would be added in the Crofton area that will also increase, again, the price of housing, $10,000 to $20,000 at least. And this is, the way it's being passed, or you all have modified, it's as if it's for Realtors to advertise green space. It's not going to affect anything else but, you know, the advertising of, yes, we have green space in underserved areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wadi.
Good evening, council. My name is Van Mason, and my address is 338 Fairfield Drive, Severn, Maryland 21144. I am opposing Amendment Number 9 that hasn't been proposed or will be proposed soon. I cannot emphasize enough the importance and value of having natural land in proximities to a person's property. I am a licensed real estate residential broker in Anarundel County, and I appreciate your comments, but there are a lot of concerns that we can address as it relates to middle missed housing. Unfortunately, with this particular bill, I would say that, or amendment, it won't serve the purpose for which people move to the county for, which is our natural resources. I would like to say that the mapping in itself is an asset for a homeowner. That's one of the things that they ask, is, you know, what is in proximity to my home, you know, as far as those resources? And they need to know about what their land and what they can do with it. The mapping will allow such a thing. So when you look at this amendment, that would take that away from them. As a professional Realtor and broker, and I have many agents, and we're in a market, not just in Anarundel County, as far as bids not being accepted or offers, it's a national issue. And there's many things that we can talk about there, but for this particular green infrastructure, we need to have natural resources for our potential homeowners, period. That's just my, what I'm seeing in the industry, what I have observed. I've been a homeowner since 2001. I came from Howard County, which has a lot of natural resources, but I came to Anarundel for affordability, and we still are one of the lower taxes in, out of the 23 counties we have in Maryland. That's my two cents.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Dawn Stoltzus. I'm a resident of District 6 in Anarundel County. I've lived here for, in Anarundel County, for about 25 years. I am a member of the Planning Advisory Board of Anarundel County, but I'm speaking tonight on my own personal behalf, but I just wanted to point that out. And I'm also a mom, and I've worked on a lot of many environmental and public health issues in this county during my time. So I'm here tonight just to voice my support for the Green Infrastructure Master Plan, the original version, and not any weakening amendments that may come. You know, green infrastructure is really sort of a fancy science planning word for natural undeveloped lands that have huge benefits for public health, for our economy, for clean air and clean water, and also for the climate change. And it is very much an equity issue where not everyone has equal access to all of those resources. So I am opposed to any amendments that would weaken it or take any of the value away from this plan, which is not regulatory, but really just data and information that's going to help people make really good planning decisions. I will mention that the Planning Advisory Board I serve on did support the plan unanimously, and there was extensive public insight, public oversight and input for several periods of years leading up to the plan. So let's keep it a strong master plan and support our planning staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You may proceed.
Thank you, Chair. Melanie Hartwig-Davis, address is 501 Bayview Point Drive in Edgewater. I was last year, February 22nd, to share my enthusiastic support for the 2022 Green Infrastructure Plan. I am here tonight, yes, speaking as an individual, as a constituent, and as a citizen of Anarundel County, also here to emphasize that the Anarundel County Planning Board voted unanimously in support of this Green Infrastructure Master Plan. As a diverse body of experts, from business owners to an architect to Realtors, we all recognized on the Planning Advisory Board that the master plan is, for what it is, an amazing investment in what our county holds and what we should be proud of. This document should be utilized to prioritize both public and private funding to help us meet our countywide goal of conserving 30% of our forest by 2030. The importance of this goal cannot be understated as we struggle to adapt to extreme weather and face millions of dollars in damage and destruction that increases year after year. This planning document will be instrumental in educating landowners regarding the integrity of their land, fully enabling them to make their own educated choices about what they want to do with their land. The document, as has been explained time and time and time again, is non-regulatory. The document builds on the integrity of our Plan 2040. I've watched with complete frustration and dismay as amendment after amendment has been presented, and many have passed. Ultimately, these do nothing more than add costly administrative burdens and time delays for implementation. I ask that you pass this bill tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And you may proceed.
Thanks very much. Matt Minahan, 3651 First Avenue, Edgewater, District 7. Madam Chair and council members, I'm here to oppose Amendment Number 9. I see it as an elegant and cynical way to undermine the county's efforts to preserve green space and forests. It hamstrings the council. It hamstrings, pardon me, sir, it hamstrings the administrative departments. It.
I'm sorry. Just a moment, please.
Madam Chair, point of order. Are we going to have people commenting on an amendment that hasn't been introduced and hasn't been passed that's out of order in terms of how our process works? So it's happened once, and I didn't say anything, but it's now happening again, and so I guess I'm just trying to understand from the chair as the parliamentarian, what's the process here?
So my understanding is that these amendments are posted. Is that correct? So in, I can ask Madam Secretary if she has a thought. If they're posted, they seem like appropriate topic for conversation, especially since there wouldn't be a separate time for that except once, you know, if an amended bill passed.
That's when it is appropriate.
We don't have a process in our rules for amendments. We just try to get them out to the public as early as we can, if you all allow that to happen. That's kind of how we handle it. This amendment was put, posted online this afternoon between 4:30 and 5:00 with the meeting packet, and paper copies are available out front. They've been out front since 6:30. So barring a specific rule that would explain why we can't have testimony on an amendment that's out there, I don't have an answer to that question. We could consult with one of the attorneys in attendance this evening if you'd like.
It's fine. I withdraw my point of order on this. Let's just have it go forward.
All right. Thank you. Then in that case, we will proceed.
I see this amendment as a cynical way to undermine the county's efforts to preserve green space and forests. You're hamstringing the county's administrative agencies. You're requiring them to work together at times and in ways that just slows down the work of the administrative agencies. And it seems like another way to de, to destruct the Green Infrastructure Master Plan. I have similar feelings about the council passing the notification bill last week. It seems like an underhanded way to encourage property owners to develop their land rather than to preserve their land. And I also believe it's an unfunded mandate on OPZ. The benefits to forests are indisputable. You've heard them plenty of times already. Just last week, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change released a scientifically-based report with dire predictions for the health of the planet. Unless we take care of these matters, we know what needs to be done to address these concerns, to reduce harmful emissions, and to do more to protect and restore resources that store carbon. Why anyone would slow this bill down, would add it with complicating amendments, makes no sense to me. I'll just add further that as this resolution has no regulatory authority, I don't understand your investments slowing it down.
Thank you very much.
I also hope you'll support 2722, the pension bill on for tonight.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. This panel is dismissed. If there is anyone else here who wishes to speak, you may come down to the table at this time. All right. Seeing no additional movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 8-22 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8-22 as amended.
Bill Number 822. An Ordinance Concerning Zoning 2022 Green Infrastructure Master Plan.
Thank you. We do have one amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 9.
Amendment Number 9. This amendment prohibits certain agencies from referring to the 2022 Green Infrastructure Master Plan in comments on development applications, and prohibits certain agencies from referencing or considering the 2022 Green Infrastructure Master Plan when reviewing applications or denying applications based in whole or in part on the 2022 Green Infrastructure Master Plan.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment. As a sponsor, you may make a brief statement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So contrary to the statements that have been made thus far, there is no effort to slow down this legislation. Frankly, this legislation has been slowed down for weeks and months, as there have been many amendments that have quote-unquote weakened it and taken the teeth out of it. If you actually look at what has happened with this bill, because it is not a resolution, as was stated, it is actually a bill, when you look at it, it has gone from something that could have had potentially quasi-regulatory authority to something that has been clarified to have no regulatory authority. The intention of this amendment comes out of a constituent of mine who reached out to me and provided me with a copy of an administrative hearing officer decision wherein the Greenways Master Plan was referenced by the administrative hearing officer in part of the decision that was made. And the concern that arose from that by my constituent and that I share is that you have a non-regulatory document that others in the county are looking at and referencing in making decisions, thereby skirting around this idea that it's non-regulatory in nature. Specifically, in that instance, it referred to some comments that were received by the Department of Wreckin' Parks on the fact that this parcel where this person lived fell within the Lake Shore-Bodkin Park Greenway as part of the Anarundel County Greenways Master Plan. Obviously, that parcel has been developed. It was not an undeveloped parcel anymore. So with that, I believe that what this amendment does is actually clarifies yet again what this council has repeatedly tried to do the last few weeks and months as we have been amending this bill. This is not regulatory. This cannot be relied upon by county agencies or county decision-makers when they are going forward and saying, we are going to deny or approve a development application, because I thought that was what the council was doing with the amendments that we had the last few weeks and months. So with that, I would move this amendment.
Is there a second? Second. Jessica Hare, sorry. Any additional discussion from my colleagues?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So my only question would be, it's my understanding, a number of times during a development process, someone might want to give a conservation easement in exchange for other, you know, other things that they're doing on the property or things like that. So you almost have to look at the Green Infrastructure Plan when you're considering some of these, if somebody's coming to you and wants to give an easement. Am I wrong about that?
Pete.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry, Madam Chair. Pete Barron, I'll let the Office of Planning and Zoning take that question, but before I do, I want to respond to a couple of points Councilman Volkey raised. This.
Mr. Barron, I apologize. We did sort of go slightly out of order. I did want to offer the administration an opportunity to respond to the amendment, so I can see that's what you're going to do. I'd like to go ahead and formally give you permission to do so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think Councilwoman Hare raises an important point, and I'll get to that in a second. I think.
Point of order, Madam Chair. Does the councilwoman's question get answered before the administration gives their response? Because I think a councilwoman did ask a question, and typically in protocol, that would allow that question to be answered before the admin jumps in.
That would be fine with me. Would you mind answering Councilwoman Hare's question, and then we can come back to your...
Promise we will get to it.
Okay. Thank you.
I will turn it over to Planning and Zoning, but I think there's a couple of things that are important for context that are related to the questions on the table right now. We have stated repeatedly, the plan as introduced stated that this is not a regulatory document. There are many reasons why the council or the administration agencies would need to look at the plan for where we make certain investments. And I just want to be on the record here, sir, that this amendment takes it a fully step forward, way beyond what we're talking about here. This is practically a "don't say green" amendment. This is practically a "don't say green" amendment. What, what we have here is taking, taking this and saying, "Planners, you do all of that work, and nobody can reference it ever." And that's too far. So, what, what I think we need to do here is reject this amendment. In fairness to the process, I'm going to turn it over to OPZ to talk about Councilwoman Hare's question. Thank you.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Councilwoman Hare, can you clarify for me, because you were very broad in your reference to easements? As you may know, there are lots of different kinds of easements, and for instance, forest conservation easements happen under the Forest Conservation Act, which is regulation that is implemented by the Office of Planning and Zoning. But many other easements, notably for land conservation, are handled by the Office of Parks and Recreation, Recreation and Parks, I'm sorry. So, I'm just trying to understand which kind of easement you're referring to, because that depends, that, that impacts whether I should answer it or whether Ms. Matthews should answer it. Ms. Matthews Jackson.
Honestly, either is fine, maybe, maybe both of you can offer some guidance, depending on which form of easement you're talking about, because this specifically says that you can't reference or consider the master plan in the review of any application. I'm just, we have said that the Green Infrastructure Plan can impose restrictions, and I'm trying to understand if that is sufficient for what Councilman Volkey is trying to get at, and maybe I have a follow-up question here for Office of Law, or if, whether this amendment is truly necessary. But I can envision times where a person comes in, maybe it's the Planning and Zoning, maybe, maybe it's Rec and Parks who's handling it, but where they would like you to be looking at the Green Infrastructure Plan because they're bringing something to you. And I guess I'm just trying to understand if that is something that happens or not.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So, the Green Infrastructure Plan was already amended by clarifying some language in, actually adding a lot of language into 182103, which is the county code, which is ordinance, which is regulatory. And so, D1 now states in our county code if, if the plan were to get amended, adopted, "The 2022 Green Infrastructure Master Plan is not regulatory, does not have the force of law, and does not impose restrictions on development or land use in the county." To me, what that says is that really during the development review process, we're not going to look at this. We're not going to look at the Green Infrastructure Plan. This is more restrictive than what we have right now in Greenways, because we don't have any of that kind of guidance with the 2002 Greenways Plan. Now, what we do have regulating forest is the Forest Conservation Act, which again is an ordinance, is a law, and we implement, and we can implement, and we end up with forest conservation easements on forest land from development projects all the time. So, I really feel that the council has been very, very clear, and I would tell planners not to be referencing the Green Infrastructure Master Plan, doing development review based on the amendments that have already come. Now, that's the Office of Planning and Zoning. I think that I do need to turn it over to the Department of Recreation and Parks for their take with land conservation.
Good evening, I'm Erica Matthews, the Deputy Director for Recreation and Parks. I think we look at this two different ways. When I'm reviewing, because subdivision review does fall under capital projects in the department, unfortunately, I'm not familiar with the specific case, but typically, we say one of three things when that comes in. We say the property is listed in the Greenway, the development has no impact. We may say that, we may ask, because that is all that we can do is ask, that a corridor be widened to 200 feet so that it's consistent with the Greenway. We may ask that they shift their forest conservation area to another part of the property so that it's contiguous with the other natural resources that are a part of it. At no point can I recall denying anything because it's in a Greenway. So, I'm not sure what was referenced, other than us acknowledging that it was there and saying, "Thank you for, thank you that it's there." But again, the regulations had no teeth, so we cannot enforce anything in the documents. I can't issue a denial the way that the code is currently written. I can't say no. Any denial that we give is more directed toward an impact to a park, an impact to a trail, stormwater management, you're tearing something up, that's more of that. But this is more of a, there is no penalty for developing in the Greenway. There's no rules for anything, I can't do anything but ask. And if they say no, then I say, "Well, thank you for your consideration," and we move forward. In terms of land conservation, this document is very valuable because we use it as part of our planning. So, when we are looking at land to buy for conservation, or someone presents a property to us for either conservation, or they want to give it to us as a donation, or somebody thinks it's a great idea for us to conserve these acres next to a Greenway, we look at the plan. I mean, it's the basis for which the conversation starts, it's not where the conversation ends.
Go ahead, Ms. Hare.
Okay, I just have one follow-up. I think, Ms. Klausmeyer, this is for you. So, we were just discussing the language about "does not impose restrictions." I see that, and Ms. Pampa just stated, I agree with her, my understanding of it is then it's not the basis for any kind of denial or restriction on that. I'm not familiar with the details of Mr. Volkey's case, but do you agree, from a legal standpoint, that the language that's in there that it may not impose restrictions would prohibit a hearing officer from denying an appeal on the basis of the plan?
I think so. I think the answer is found on page 16 of the actual plan, which says it does not impact what may be built upon a property, it supports outreach, education, and voluntary actions to provide habitat and green spaces. The plan does not create any new requirements for private property owners and upholds their rights to steward their own land. The plan is not regulatory, it does not change zoning or development requirements or otherwise change or limit property rights, any potential acquisitions or easements are voluntary and agreed to by willing landowners. So, I think that language in and of itself indicates-
Okay. That, so you agree with-
I agree.
Okay, thank you. Any additional comments or questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 9.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Ms. Radveen.
Nay.
One in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number 9 has been defeated.
All right, is there any further discussion among my colleagues on Bill 8-22? Seeing no lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 8-22 as amended.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill Number 822 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill Number 16-22 as amended.
Bill Number 1622, An Ordnance Concerning Police Accountability Board.
Again, this is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know there are a number of people here to testify on the bill and a number of amendments to go through. We have our panel here with us again, I will introduce them, and then ask that we move to hear the public. We have our police chief, Chief Alwid, we have Rhonda McCoy from the city of Annapolis, we have Ethan Hunt from our Office of Law, and Lori Blair Klausmeyer from our Office of Law. Also, in, in the building are a number of subject matter experts, including our Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Director, Pete Hill, as well as our members of our police department. With that, if council has any questions now, but happy to wait until after we hear from the public.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from my colleagues before we proceed to the public hearing? All right, seeing none. Madam Secretary, do we have any test, oh, excuse me, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 16-22 as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair and Councilmembers, we received four submissions of testimony through the online testimony tool that went to the entire council, it's part of the record, it's included in the summary that is posted online. We also received one submission to our Dropbox this afternoon that was scanned and shared with all of you using Google Drive.
Thank you very much. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill Number 16-22 as amended. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I will call down, let's see, we've got six chairs down here, I'll call you down in groups of six. So, when I call your name, come on down and have a seat at the table in front of the dais. Lorena Diaz, Randy Williams, Joshua Hatch, Linda Davis, Jennifer Sell, and Valerie Harrison. All right, and I'm going to go in the order that I have here, but I think obviously, we had, we called, I called six names and we have three people, so Lorena, not Lorena, Randy, not Randy.
Joshua.
Yes.
Okay, you may proceed. Two minutes.
Good evening, my name is Joshua Hatch, I'm a resident of Annapolis, I live at 1856 Bowman Court. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Freedom Fighters LLC, the Chairman for the Public Safety Committee for the Caucus of African-American Leaders, a coalition member of the Annapolis United and Connected, working in concert with the Annapolis City Police Department along with several leaders and organizations, and a service provider for the Positive Impact Program that is with the Annapolis Police Department. As an advocate, I've had an opportunity to advocate for individuals who have been wrongly convicted, as well as to meet with several executives of the law enforcement community. As a taxpayer, employer, and advocate, I've taken all these roles and volunteered my time because I understand the bigger picture, which is making communities safer for our children and for our future. I've been called to speak at press conferences regarding violence in our city, and have stood next to the mayor, members of city council, and members of the police department. I've huddled in rooms with members of law enforcement to discuss how to curb violence, and have offered my time, talents, and ability to pour into the common objective. So, my question to you today is, do you think a person like myself should be a candidate of the Police Accountability Board? Should we call on residents to assist the police department in matters of public safety yet exclude those very people that offer ideas on how to improve our communities? We speak to them privately in order to improve our community, yet and still, we're here today to fight for something that would actually improve the relationship, the fractured relationship between the community and the police department. If the police department wants legitimacy for the work, the hard work that they do in the community, then the community should be allowed to sit at a table to express their opinions, their concerns, in order to draw an understanding of what it is that the community has applied in as it pertains to public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hatch. Linda Davis.
Hello, Linda Davis, 215 Cornet Drive, Lythaca, Maryland. Fifty-eight years ago, Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. gave his "I have a dream" speech. Do you know what else he said that day? "We can never be satisfied as long as the African-American is the victim of the unspeakable horrors of police brutality. We are not satisfied." Fifty-six years ago, Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. said, "The time is always right to do right." County Executive Pittman repeated this quote at the parade held this past weekend honoring Dr. King, who was assassinated 50 years ago today. I would like to ask Mr. Pittman and the county council if the time is right to do what is right for the black and brown community. Is it time to make the police accountable for the police brutality that continues today, 58 years after King's speech, or is it time to do what's right for the FOP? Speaking of the FOP, at the last county council hearing, I brought up the billions of dollars this country spends on police misconduct. After that, I realized I wasn't following the money. I heard that six out of the seven of you, as well as Mr. Pittman, received endorsements from the FOP. I would like to know if any money came with these endorsements. I would like to know if you're more satisfied with receiving endorsements and possibly money than you are with achieving real police accountability. We are not satisfied if this is the case. I would like to thank my councilwoman, Sarah Lacy, for voting on principle and being like Shirley Chisholm, whose campaign theme was "Unbought and Unbossed," and for not being afraid to stand up to the police. Speaking of being afraid of the police, I wonder if that's what is motivating the rest of you. Maybe your fear of the police will give you empathy for the fear that the black and brown community has of the police, and that maybe that will move you to create a strong and effective Police Accountability Board. Until you do, we will not be satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis, and Ms. Sell.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Sell, and I live at 444 Linwood Drive, Severna Park, Maryland, 21146. I can't say I'm super excited to be here for the fourth county council meeting in a row, but here we are, spending more time together, yay. We're here asking you to create a stronger and more equitable Police Accountability Board that doesn't only serve the needs of the FOP, which serves the needs of the police, who are supposed to serve the needs of us, the people of Anorundel County. White people love quoting MLK, Stuart Pittman is on quite the MLK quick kick lately. If you want to see some of his favorites, you can look at his Twitter and Instagram account, he spouted off a bunch of them. I'd also like to leave you with one of MLK's quotes. It's not one that Pittman used because it would be hypocritical of him to do so, and I don't think his handlers at the FOP would be comfortable with him using it. The quote is, "I must confess that over the past few years, I have been gravely disappointed with the white moderate. I have almost reached the regrettable conclusion that the black person's great stumbling block in his stride toward freedom is not the white citizen's counselor or the Ku Klux Klaner, but the white moderate, who is more devoted to order than to justice, who prefers a negative piece, which is the absence of tension, to a positive piece, which is the presence of justice." Councilmember Hare, what kind of white person are you going to be tonight? Councilmember Fiedler, what kind of white person are you going to be tonight? Councilmember Pruski, what kind of white person are you going to be tonight? Councilmember Volkey, what kind of white person are you going to be tonight? Councilmember Pickard, what kind of councilmember are you going to be tonight? I didn't need to ask Radveen or Lacy because I already know. Are you going to help us get a just and equitable membership amendment? Are you going to recognize that the state law is a floor and not a ceiling, and that the PAB can have investigative powers? Are you going to stand up for what is right and just, or will you just fold and go along and become another white person who has gotten in the way of racial justice? Are you going to remove the ban of people with former convictions? Are you going to prohibit family members of police from serving in the PAB? And are you going to make ride-alongs optional, not mandatory? Thank you.
Thank you very much. This panel is dismissed. I will call down the next six speakers who signed up ahead of time. Reverend Marguerite Morris, Wanda Brown, Armani Jackson, Apostle Antonio Palmer, Linda And Reverend Morris, you have the floor first. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes when you are ready.
Well, first, I'll say I wasn't prepared for that, so I thank God for efficiency. I want to say to you tonight that many of us have once again sat before you, we've made speeches, we've done demonstrations, we've brought everything that we can possibly bring to the table. Something I'm going to ask you tonight is really to consider and to pray about it and to think about it. Some of you can't look us in the face, some of you can look us in the face, but what we've brought to you tonight is factual, it's real, and we need you to do the right thing on our behalf. I have here two letters that are written, you've probably already seen them from our House of Delegates, that states that, and let me back up, I'm Marguerite Morris, P.O. Box 508, Odington, Maryland, and I'm opposed to the bill unless amended, unless made with our amendments. But I have here two letters that you've probably already read and heard, that what was recommended was the floor and not the ceiling. You've heard about our loses, you've heard about all of our impacts. We really want you to consider and step outside the box. Don't consider, try this, try considering where we've been, think about where we are, and let's do this thing for where we want to go. Again, we are not anti-police, we're anti-bad police, and I want to say for the record as well- And I want to say for the record as well, that even in our last advocacy brunch, we recognized one of our county's police officers for the fine work that he had done, and the fine work that some of them are still doing. But we need you to hear us. The unique piece that I brought as I bring this to a close is that I know for a fact that everything that comes out of a police department is not real and factual. It's written based upon the opinions of the persons that write those reports. You're asking us again to just consider and take everything as a blanket because the police have a propensity, everybody believes what they say, and in each case, we can't do that. Sometimes we can, sometimes we can't, but we ask you today to please consider our amendments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend Morris. Next is Wanda Brown.
Hello, everyone.
Oh, let's get your microphone turned on. And if you wouldn't mind, state your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, sure, sure. Hi, my name is Wanda Brown. My address is PO Box 3231, Annapolis, Maryland, 21403. I am for accountability. My dad was killed by a policeman. This year will be forty-one years, July the 20th, 1981. My dad was a mom dad. He took care of his girls, just like my mother did, because she worked. My dad did our hair, he took us to his appointment. He was, he was a craftsman. He did, he made homemade rugs. He did matchbox frames. He was a hard worker. He took care of his family. And on July the 20th, my dad, an unarmed Black man, was pulled over for a traffic violation and was fatally shot twice in the chest at close range. It destroyed the family. It was the first time from 1956 to 1981, my mother took sick leave. She never took sick leave until that occurred. My father was a community person. He took care of children in the neighborhood. He took care of people he didn't know. If anyone of need needed something, he did it. He was a, he was the monarch of the Perry family, all through the country. Everyone could depend on my dad. He has missed everything. His three girls getting married, the grandchildren out, ownership of businesses, he's missed graduations. Several of the grandkids are in college, he's missed so much. And how would anyone feel if you have a family member, children, and they, they never come back? It's always someone, he's missing from the table at all times. Family affairs, he just, his sister just had an 85th surprise birthday party, he was not there. I had to pass the school and the church where he, my father was not there. He is always missing.
Ms. Brown, I need you to conclude your remarks, you're too many for company.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
So the need for ethics and accountability, responsibility is an ongoing duty to complete the task at hand. Accountability is what happens after situations occurs. TAP, the abbreviation, transparency, accountability, and property. Without transparency and accountability, trust will be lacking between a government and those whom it governs. Reach search has shown that the public prefers independent review of complaints against law enforcement rather than relying on police departments to conduct internal investigations. The Washington Post recently-
Ms. Brown, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, I'm sorry to-
That's okay.
-cut you short.
No problem.
Our next speaker is Armani Jackson. You may proceed.
My name is Armani Jackson, my address is in Glenburne, 21061, under District 1. Today, I come back for a second time, not asking, not recommending, but demanding that Bill 1622 is passed with the Coalition's recommendations, and I oppose the bill if it's not passed the way we want it. I'm going to use my two minutes to say again what I think I should be said, to not make you feel comfortable, but to make you think deeper about the actions you plan to make when it is time to vote on this bill again. I need you to understand the reason why this bill is severe to pass. The bill is not designed to protect people that look like yourself. Just to give you a clue as to why you're often retaliating to not pass this bill, it's because of two words: white fragility. Although only two of you have recognized your white privilege, the rest of you have yet to look at yourself in the mirror to see why you are against Black lives being protected. Otherwise, you would have been on the other side of history, on the right side. And if you did not understand what I'm trying to say right now, what I'm trying to say is, is that you're not listening to us. Listening to these stories and these people crying out to you about how they feel and their loved ones being murdered in the street, I could see it in your face, that you're not, that you don't care. I mean, I'm looking at you, Pickard, and you looking at me like I'm looking, like I got, like I got a deer in headlights. I just feel like a lot of you do not hear us, and I'm just trying to, I'm trying to be as respectful as possible, but it's frustrating because we are here for a third time. How many times do we have to come here and say the same thing over and over and over again? You continue to abuse the power that, that was given to you, and you're letting down your Black and Brown constituents. I like, like I've said before in my last testimony, it seems that the police department has their hand up your back, and you're allowing yourself to be a public puppet to your constituencies. I will close with this, and I will make sure I'm done by the two minutes. I hope that elected officials that come after you only hope that they will have the courage to stand up for what is right and not abuse their power like you're doing today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Apostle Antonio Palmer. You may proceed.
Good evening, Madam Chair and county council members. Again, I'm Antonio Palmer, the President of the United Black Clergy of Anorundel County, also the Senior Pastor of Kingdom Celebration Center, been pastoring here for 28 years. Currently, oh, Odenton, Maryland, District 4. Currently, the PAB bill disallows anyone with a prior conviction to serve on the board. There are many people who have prior records, who have paid their debt to society, and have become outstanding citizens, who contribute to creating healthy environments or making positive changes, whether on their jobs, in their communities, schools, or churches, et cetera. Over thirty years ago, I was convicted of a felon, being a first-time and last-time offender. But since that time, I've helped countless people in this same county become a better version of themselves. Today, I've worked alongside with not only elected officials, community advocates, but also police officers. In fact, every Monday, police officers are at my establishment, sometimes side by side, distributing food to those that are in need. Moreover, annually, police officers march alongside with us at our Prayer and Peace Walk in the community, hosted by myself and the United Black Clergy. I've had lunch and phone conversations with both our current Chief, Amal Alwitt, Chief Jackson of Annapolis, and our former Chief, Timothy Altomar. From the chiefs on down to the young officers who beat the streets, none have felt any harm by any decisions that I've made. Yet, as the bill is currently drafted, I would not have an opportunity to serve my county on the PAB board, and I represent hundreds of others who have turned their life around. Let me conclude with this. There are many people who have never been convicted of a crime but have made, have bad attitudes toward the police or hidden agendas. There are some that are on, that are hate, that are hate group members and KKK members who have never been convicted of a crime. But they may be able to serve on the PAB, yet I can't. Please reconsider amending the ban that disallows those who have prior convictions to serve on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. I will ask for order in the chambers. All right, next is Linda Gerdner.
All right. I'm Dr. Linda Gerdner, I live at 941 Fall Ridgeway in Gambrels, District 4. I oppose Bill 1622 unless amended with the Coalition's recommendations. At the last county council meeting, some of you talked a great deal about what the state might like or not like. As a result, you've been moving toward passing a police advisory board, which is not the same as an accountability board. You might call it that, but that's not what it's going to be with the way you currently have it. Instead, tonight, you could use your power to do something bold, to take leadership in the state and pass a robust PAB bill. I believe that most of you in your hearts know that the communities most impacted by police misconduct will not be helped much, if at all, by Bill 1622 as currently written. The PAB's membership must reflect the populations and communities that have been most negatively impacted by overpolicing. By doing this, the Anorundel PAB will have solid representation and input by those who have the greatest stake in reducing police misconduct, and this will lead to greater community trust. Those officers who are engaged in misconduct create mistrust of all police. Why? Because police misconduct, especially police killings of Black men, is the major form of racial terror in 21st century America. It impacts the individual, their families, and the entire Black community, as we've heard from some of the testimony last time and today as well. If you are not working to stop that form of racial terror in every possible way, then you are a part of perpetuating it. I can't believe that that is the record you would want to stand by. And if we vote for you, we are part of perpetuating it as well. I hope still that you will see that a robust and well-funded PAB is the path for Anorundel County to become the best place for all. Please amend the bill to include all of the Coalition's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the last in this panel, Lynn Fitzpatrick, you may have the floor.
I'm sorry, I had thought that I'd signed up for the staffing composition of the Police Accountability Board, but in any event, will we be speaking about that later tonight?
You can, if it's related to this bill on 1622, it sounds like the staffing, I mean, the staffing would be part of the, no.
No.
Oh, you're talking about, I'm sorry, you're talking about the bill that creates the executive director?
Right.
There's no, okay, so there's no public hearing on that bill tonight?
Okay. In any event, I'll take a little bit of time to talk about the Police Accountability Board. My experience with requesting an internal investigation from the police force, actually from the Chief of Police and from the mayor of Annapolis, there was no obvious way of initiating, getting an investigation initiated. And even if there had been through the police department, I would have been skeptical, given my experience that I'd already had with them. So it wasn't until I spoke, or until I pushed the city manager and the city attorney to initiate an investigation that I got anywhere. So what I really want to say is that we have to get this right, because when somebody has an issue enough to request an internal investigation, there's a serious misjustice that's occurred, and regardless of what color that person is, or what their educational background is, or anything, there has to be, there has to be an avenue that they get a sense that there's fairness. So I really, really have to agree with just about everybody else who has been up here for the last three weeks. Please accept the recommendations of the Coalition and make this as transparent as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This panel is dismissed. I have one more name on my list, and I'll go back and call the three names that of folks that weren't here initially. So the last person on my list is Emma Buckman, and then I will call Lorena Diaz, Randy Williams, and Valerie Harrison one more time. And if you are present, you may come down. And there will be an opportunity for individuals who did not sign up to speak after this. I'll make another call. All right, Ms. Buckman, you may proceed.
Good evening, Emma Buckman, I live in Severna Park, Maryland. I'm here once again to ask that Bill 1622 not be passed unless amended to include the recommendations of the Coalition for Police Accountability for Anorundel County. I see this mostly as an exercise in futility at this point, as it's pretty clear that five out of seven of you here consistently ignore the stories, tears, and pain of the community. But again, I feel it is important that you hear community voices. In my job as a nonprofit director, I help manage a small team of amazing people. It is part of my job to strike compromise among my team, just as it's my manager's job to do so for our entire foundation. Sometimes compromise means making concessions, but at the end of the day, it is my job to ensure that a compromise results in a net positive outcome for my team and does not risk their safety or happiness. I could not imagine asking my team to make compromises that result in them being in pain, reliving trauma, or disturbing their peace, and that is exactly what you are doing right now. In a way, your jobs as councilmembers are a lot like those of managers. It's your job to strike compromise for the benefit of all of your constituents, all of your team members. A big part of leadership is accountability to your team, and right now, you're only holding yourselves accountable to a very small portion of your team, the portion with the most privilege and the most money. Delegate for District 30A Shanika Henson recently wrote to the county executive and the council and stated, "As advocates have said, and I concur, House Bill 670 created a foundation for minimum standards, not a barrier. The law's purpose and intention was, among other things, to remove obstacles for civilian participation in the disciplinary process and allow counties the ability to create more robust civilian oversight in their PABs. I can guarantee that it was not the intent of the majority of my colleagues to create a system that allows only the police to investigate police, as that would make the repeal of Leiborgh meaningless and fail to answer the loud calls for police reform from our constituents." End quote. Delegate Henson is just the latest expert to tell you that House Bill 670 is the floor for building civilian oversight on PABs, not the ceiling. There is no excuse for all of you to not be doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Diaz.
Hi. Can you hear me now? Yep. My name is Lorena Diaz, I live in Pasadena, Maryland, so, Councilmember Volkey, I'm pronouncing it correctly, you are my representative. Really, this message is for you, but it's also for the rest of the councilmembers that are here. This is my first time being at this hearing for the PAB, but I've been keeping up, and I've worked with some individuals who have been telling their stories for years, and I've also have heard individuals who have been fighting for over thirty years for some type of police accountability. And now, it's in your hands, and you're choosing to ignore the voices of directly impacted partners. And while I can understand as a white individual, it might be difficult for you to understand what Black and Brown individuals go through on a daily basis, it is your job to at least hear them out. And what you've been doing is having people come here every single week, or the hearings that you've had, and have them pour out their trauma for you to sit here and continue to ignore them, continue to put amendments that would weaken this bill. Police officers need to be held accountable, and you cannot do that by having them police themselves. So I'm not sure what else it would take for individuals to come here and make that clear, because they have been reliving their trauma, and rather than listening to them and understanding that they are experts within this, you choose to listen to the FOP, you choose to take amendments that weaken this bill. So my question to you is, who are you accountable to? Because I know that the district that we live in is majority white, so I'm sure your vote is not going to be hurt, but how can you go at home and be okay with the fact that you're weakening a bill? But when a Black body or a Brown body is killed, what are you going to do? So I ask you to stop doing this to individuals who are directly impacted, to have them pour their trauma over and over and over again, and for you to ignore them.
Thank you very much. This panel is dismissed. At this time, if there is anyone else who wishes to come down and speak to the council, you may come at this time. All right, and since I'm looking to my right, Mr. Waddy, you go first. We'll go from my right to left today.
Thank you. First, I'd like to mention that I totally concur with what is said earlier about the bill. bill, the state bill, being a floor and not a ceiling. And I think, you know, you all have been provided with legal analysis that can assist you with that. I also heard that this is not a police accountability board. And I think that the Office of Law also stated that last week themselves. They said that this, that we should really change the name from accountability. And I think that that speaks to the lack of teeth that this bill has, not just the state bill, but also this bill. So we have to take this opportunity to legitimize the process. And what I heard earlier about racialized terror, racialized terror starts in many areas. It’s in the school system. It’s in what you’re learning psychologically. It’s in healthcare. We all experienced a great deal of racialized terror. This is racialized terror, in that the people who experience these things are greatly impacted are black and brown. Economic terror is poverty in regards to, we just talked about this, the increase in the price of housing. That’s economic terror that people are experiencing. And then at the end, after all of that, is slavery. Slavery is racialized terror. The Thirteenth Amendment allows slavery, in the exception of a crime. So if you commit a crime that these police are going to convict you or arrest you for, or are targeting your community for, then you have the fear of racialized terror. I heard it this morning with a young woman who was subject to a violation of probation, and she’s facing time in jail. And that is a racialized terror, that all of us within the black community here first and will generally have to help comfort. So you all have the opportunity now, I mean, you’ve had the opportunity, especially in the wake of the January 30th killing in Crofton that happened, to speak up, to speak out, to do the work that needs to be done. And I still can’t believe that the police actually engaged in the killing of an unarmed black man during this debate, during this entire debate, that the police in Anarundel County committed the killing of an unarmed black man. And we all saw the video that was released the day after our last hearing. So it’s just that much more terrorizing to have to come here and do as we stated earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next speaker, please. Yep, you’re up.
Good evening, council. I don’t have a prepared testimony or remark.
Could I just interrupt to ask you to state your name and address?
Yes.
For the record, no problem.
William Rau, 924 Wells Avenue, Annapolis, Maryland. As I said, I don’t have a prepared statement. I really just wanted to come forward and speak from my heart, which I think I normally do. And I believe that most of the people who’ve had the bravery to come before you in their off time, after their jobs, and away from their families and children, much as you all are doing, to step forward and speak to something that they believe is important to our communities. So for myself, not speaking from my deja vu, but speaking as William, a black man who lives in Annapolis, I just really would like for you all to consider the purpose and fidelity of the crafting of the state legislation. And to remember that it didn’t happen overnight. It took a lot of sweat, blood, sweat, and tears for people to pass this legislation. It’s at state level. So the question I want to pose to you all, and I would like for all of you all, including Jessica Hare, to consider and really think about, is that it’s nothing lighthearted. It is something that was important enough to compel our state legislators to create something to give to you all to consider, which is not easy. And you all know it’s not easy to pass legislation, right? So I want you all to just consider, like, the reason why this lands here. It did not land before you because the Police Department or law enforcement agencies begged them to repeal the Law Enforcement Officers’ Bill of Rights. It didn’t land here because law enforcement officers asked that they be held accountable. It is landing before you because of people like this, and because of mothers, and children, and families, and people without titles, and people without the privilege of being able to be at meetings like this regularly. So I just want you all, I’m not going to, this isn’t an attempt to shame you, this is purely esoteric and emotional. I would like for you all to really consider how important this is, and that it should not be led by any one other than people who have been devastated by issues such as these. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I respectfully ask that I can be, as I’m looking at my notes, because if I could be considered, like, close to last.
That would be fine. Alderman Savage.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to the county council. My name is Rob Savage. I live at 12 Windrush Per Lane. And I’m here today as an alderperson, representing Ward 7. And I’m here to support the recommendations from the Anarundel Coalition for Police Accountability. I introduced a city resolution to convey our support of these recommendations. I did this because Annapolis will be under the jurisdiction of the PAB and other boards, and it felt it was important for the city council to weigh in on this. I was also spurred to action when I looked at all of the member groups in this coalition, which includes Annapolis Human Relations Commission. While we would all benefit from improved accountability in all levels of government, the coalition members represent the segments of our population that will be most impacted by this legislation. And improving trust with the communities these organizations represent will lead to across-the-board improvements in policing. Our city legislation has been given a favorable recommendation from both our Rules and Government Committee, as well as our Public Safety Committee. Our final vote on this legislation will be on April 11th. And considering that it has received two favorable recommendations from our committees, with enough votes to pass the entire council, I’m confident that we will pass this on Monday night. So I want to thank all of you for your work on this bill. I can barely keep up with my own council responsibilities, so I have not, I admit, I have not completely looked at all of the amendments and followed entirely what this body is doing on this legislation. I’ve been focusing on the Coalition’s recommendations and how it pertains to the city. So all what I ask is that when your legislation does come up for a final vote, that you take our resolution under consideration, since we in Annapolis and the constituents we represent will be impacted by this. So thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Leanna Harrison. I’m the Research and Policy Analyst for CASA in Baltimore and Central Maryland. I’m here today to be the voice of over 120,000 black and brown immigrants in Maryland, over 4,000 in Anarundel County, some of which are here with us today in the audience. And we’re here in solidarity with the Anarundel County Coalition for Police Accountability, testifying in opposition to the bill without the Coalition’s amendments. I’ve shared previously with the council stories from our community of police misconduct and intimidation preventing proper reporting. We come together today to show that we refuse to be intimidated anymore. No nos sigan intimidando, si se puede. For our community, police misconduct can have different consequences relating to immigration. In order for us to continue being the backbone of essential industries such as healthcare, hospitality, and construction in Central Maryland, we must be protected from misconduct at the hand of police, I mean, excuse me, at the hand of law enforcement. We ask that our contributions are not only recognized but respected by providing us appropriate protections for misconduct, such as a police accountability board that will take action to rebuild trust and safety. We ask for more police accountability. We ask for representation that actually reflects those most affected by misconduct. We ask that you heed to the recommendations of our coalition, our coalition of experts and community members who are truly dedicated to what you have, to what you have us pledged to at the beginning of each meeting, liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cruz.
Good evening. My name is Amy Cruz. I’m a resident of Annapolis County District 6. I’m also the Legal Program Manager at the ACLU of Maryland, a six-year member of the Baltimore Civilian Review Board, and a member of the National Association of Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement. My testimony today is focused on the amendments that the Coalition supports and opposes. We support the amendment to give the PAB investigatory powers. Without this amendment, we’re left with only the police investigating the police, which defeats the whole point of the police reform bills of 2021. Nothing in House Bill 670 prohibits you from doing this, as Delegate Bartlett and Delegate Henson each explained in two letters we shared with you earlier today. We also feel strongly that the membership should reflect the populations, identities, and communities that have the most law enforcement encounters. Therefore, we support amendments to remove the ban of people with former convictions, and also amendments to, oppose amendments to require high school diploma, drug tests, et cetera, all of those disproportionately shut out populations most impacted by police misconduct. We know that the police insisted on these membership restrictions. There’s no accountability in a police accountability board created by police, or with the police and their lawyers being most influential in this bill, while black and brown residents and other advocates having to beg you to consider our stories, our facts, and our expertise. There is such hypocrisy in the police claiming that residents might have conflict of interest and bias against them, while inserting themselves in their political power on this whole process. They, the police, who have the biggest conflict of interest when it comes to this board. The police should not be creating the Police Accountability Board. You, representing all of the residents of Anarundel County, black, brown, white, immigrants, people with disabilities, LGBTQIA residents, and young people, you, representing the people, not the FOP, must create a community-centered PAB. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker.
Madam Chair, all of committee members, I thank you for this opportunity to speak. I’m a resident of 94 East Street, which is steps off of State Circle. I come, and my statement is going to sort of like pick up where the young lady just finished talking. I have, I have an experience that I’d like to share, and ask for the committee to, if not have some kind of review panel, to review it themselves, because accountability is very difficult to achieve when you’re just a basic person. I have two vehicles. I park them right in that area. I felt kind of guilty, so I started parking them. I have the appropriate parking permission, which I pay for annually. I started parking them around the corner on Blueberry Square. The police towed my vehicle in April of 15th last year. I was riding my bicycle, which I do daily, and that’s why I moved the vehicles around there, so that I wouldn’t be inconveniencing my neighbors. I felt, so anyway, I was riding my bike, the vehicles, I mean, my vehicle was gone. One of the vehicles, I went and knocked on people’s doors around there. I said, “Hey, did you see what happened to my vehicle?” They said, “Oh, the police towed it.” So then I went and I tried to reach the police. When I finally did, it was after hours. And they said, “We towed you,” this was in, at the height of COVID, when DMV had suspended all renewals, and they towed my vehicle for having spire tags. I had attempted to have this renewed three times prior. At this point, I still don’t have my vehicle, and when I went to try to retrieve it, they had me, I went to the police officer to get some, to the police station to get some information. They had me, they said, “We can’t give you any information unless you sign this form.” I signed the form, and they gave me where the vehicle was and why they towed it.
I need to ask you to summarize your comments, because your two minutes have expired.
Wow. Summarizing, I like to...
The best you can.
Summarize it. I still don’t have my vehicles. The police said that they don’t have it, and I’ve come here as a last resort, because I requested it, and they gave me some photos. I requested the photos. The photos don’t even show that I was in violation. It just shows, anyway, I have my package, and I’d like to submit it to the panel for review in hopes that something can be done, since I haven’t been able to get any, you know, they have created lies. In addition, that statement they had me sign to get the information, they said that was a statement for me to get my car. So from that time to now, I am reduced to riding a bicycle every day, and in a scream of protest, I put this up on my house. My neighbors down there is, you know, I feel bad. I wouldn’t want to wake up with this stuff on my house. I have to look at somebody’s house with this stuff all over their house. And so I come here this evening asking for some, some type of review, because police, they’re just making up a bunch of stories to cover each other. Thank you, Your Honor, I mean, thank you, Madam Chair and the panel, for hearing my grievance.
Thank you very much.
In addition to that, I’m asking that there be some kind of accountability in place where a person doesn’t have to be injured in this way.
Thank you. All right. This panel is dismissed.
Thank you.
All right. If at this time there are any additional folks in the audience who’d like to come And once again, I’m going to go from my right to left. So Delegate Bartlett, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, members of the council. My name is Sandy Bartlett. I live at 233 Federalburg South Laurel 20724. I am a practicing attorney. I do not work in the area of state law, but I am a state delegate representing District 32 proudly. The issues of police reform are complicated, as you can hear, and they’re personal. And there have been many inequities, and there has been a long history. We did our best as state elected officials, I serve on the Judiciary Committee, we did our best to create the best framework for counties to use. We, in my opinion, did not create something that was in stone. We created what we thought would be the beginning of a conversation. You all are having it here, and I applaud you for listening. I applaud you for working. I know you’ve had long nights. I know you’ve had long days. I’ve spoken personally with some of you, and I know the conflict that you have in trying to interpret the law as we passed it, as a state body, and also to stay within the confines of the county charter. So I commend you for the work that you have done, and I commend you for the work that you are going to do. I have high expectations of you. As Ms. Cruz mentioned, I did write a statement, and I stand by my statement. Those are my words, and my words personally. I want to let you know, though, that I have asked our Attorney General to prepare an opinion on House Bill 670, so that we can have, so I would, I would like to share that with you all when we, when we receive it, and hopefully that would help with some of the clarity that the law does not provide as it is written.
Thank you very much, Delegate, and thank you for asking for that opinion. All right. Our next speaker.
Hi, my name is Jen Roman of Odenton, Maryland, and I’m speaking on behalf of Candy Clark, who couldn’t be here tonight, of Arnold, Maryland. This testimony is supporting the amendment which favors the right for returning citizens to serve on the Police Accountability Board. At the beginning of this meeting, I sped, read through all the amendments to try to find, since we only have like 30 minutes to look at the amendments, so that the amendment that this testimony supports is Amendment Number 61. Formerly incarcerated people have paid their dues and have rightfully returned to their communities. No one has... have paid their dues and have rightfully returned to their communities. No one has the right to continue to punish them without just cause. Ms. Clark has spent the last eight years working with prison advocacy reforms with Maryland Alliance for Justice Reform, directed by semi-retired Anarundel County Circuit Court Judge Phil Karum. Some of their board members and many of the advocacy groups are composed of returning citizens who are dedicated to transforming the unjust criminal justice laws. Several years ago, they had a similar situation. Returning citizens who were filling out applications for higher learning had to check a box on the front page identifying that they had been charged with an offense. This immediately pushes the interviewer's bias button of whatever stereotype they might have about the incarcerated. Many didn't even look further, just laid the application aside. Education is the best path towards making a successful reentry and never going back. Yet, the law made it even harder, putting up barriers to returning to their communities. It's an insult to their human worth and dignity, which my and Ms. Clark's faith calls up to uphold. A bill eliminated this barrier so more people had a chance to make a successful reentry. You two need to eliminate this barrier and sit with the advocate in an interview. Talk to and hear them. Hear their story. What have they been doing since they were released? Why are they seeking to do this service? Use your solid, fair judgment and not just write them off because they live behind the walls. Share your common humanity and make honest assessments if you believe they could be a good fit or not. Give them a chance. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I am Mary Grace Gallagher. I live at 10 Monticello Avenue in Annapolis, Maryland. I'm reading today for Shannon Hedges of Crofton, Maryland, who could not be here tonight. She says, "I am an engineer for a defense contractor, a scout leader, and have served as a PTA president in the last school year. In January, a mother in my Crofton community called the police requesting help with her 20-year-old son, who was engaging in a verbal altercation and preventing her from leaving a room. This unarmed 20-year-old was killed by a police officer in his mother's home two blocks from my children's home, Nantucket Elementary School. This was a domestic disturbance call, not a domestic violence call, and our community is asking the hard questions about his mother's immeasurable loss. Many of us were privileged in having police misconduct, corruption, and brutality exist only on our periphery. But with the efforts of community groups and social media, we're witnessing these injustices up close. We're recognizing the inadequate consequences that any of these officers receive. We're also increasingly aware of the importance of lived experience. We see cooperating civilians killed by fearful irrational police. We see incompetent veteran police officers killing civilians. We see the retired police officer expecting and receiving special treatment. We see incapacitated civilians struggling to breathe. We see civilians who did not make an oath to maintain the highest ethical standards recording these officer-committed crimes. These civilians are the ones recognizing and confronting injustice. The police cannot police themselves. We need confidence in this accountability board. We ask you to commit to recommended provisions provided by the Anarundel County Coalition for Police Accountability, giving the AACPAB its greatest chance to effectively support the community." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Holt. Hi, I'm Chrissy Holt from Fifth Circle, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm the state chair of Our Revolution Maryland, representing about 10,000 Marylanders, of which 500 live here in Anarundel County. My testimony, again, is to express opposition to Bill 1622, unless amended, with the Anarundel County Police Accountability Board Coalition amendments. If the police have been doing such a great job, then we shouldn't have any, they should not have any concerns. We're here because the police can't police themselves, and members of the Coalition met in good faith with the county executive and his administration for the provisions to include subpoena powers and the paid investigators to effectively review the complaints of the police misconduct that you've been hearing about tonight. The voting board members should include community members and not just families of the police, the union, or retired police. The statistics prove, including 2019, when the Blacks, who make up 29% of our population, are 71% in the jail-prison population. So by banning them, because of the high incarceration rate, putting this ban in place keeps the African-American voices off the panel. We have to acknowledge the power of the police union that are controlling the votes tonight of Pickard and Peruski. They're controlled by donations, and they have significant access to the state, county, and city budgets. We should all have access to unions with this much power to protect us at our jobs. They buy military, with these budgets, they're buying military weapons with our tax dollars to then use against us. How about buying the guns back? How about fixing the root cause of the crime with jobs, and homes, and wages, and education, and perhaps even health care? We also have to acknowledge that the dismissal of these provisions for the African-American voices and Hispanic voices on this board is being decided, again, by an all-white council and a white county executive and his administration. And you all have proven in the past, particularly Volkey and the Republicans, that you don't favor equity and you support active racism by promoting white supremacy structures, like negating the importance of critically teaching racism and white supremacy structures in American history in Anarundel County. You also fail to support universal health care by refusing to pass the Medicare-for-all resolution, like hundreds of counties across the state, including Montgomery County, PG County, and Annapolis, Maryland.
Ms. Holt, I need you to conclude your remarks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holt. Our next speaker.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Corso. I live at 23 Linden Avenue in Annapolis. This will be short. I want to express my support for the Coalition's amendments. I think that true accountability can go a long way in rebuilding trust, and I'm gonna start my testimony with the phrase, "One bad apple spoils the barrel." I know when people use that phrase, they invert the meaning and truncate it, but I always think about it. "One bad apple spoils the barrel." There's no trust left for policing in America, but I think that accountability can help build more trust. I'm wondering why we haven't heard from constituents that oppose the Coalition today. Seems like the council members maybe oppose it, but I haven't heard from anyone else that opposes it. And so, I guess my last questions are, what about these amendments make you think that the police will be less effective? What are the police afraid of? And why does accountability scare them? And why does it scare you? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Otero.
Phil Otero, Poplar Avenue. Transparency and accountability to the community is what this bill was supposed to be about. But the process from starting all the way through has been police-centered and not community-centered, as it should have been. That's why I'm, again, telling you that if you truly represent the community and care about marginalized communities, you will flush this turd of a bill and start over with a community-centered process, as it should have been the first time. It is clear this turd cannot be shined, as it's a bastardization of its original purpose. Good cops have no need to fear transparency and accountability, and we should strongly question why police are fighting any meaningful community oversight so fiercely. I get it, police are the sacred cow that shout not be questioned, similar to the military. What you don't seem to understand is that a supposedly free people that are in supposedly free country shouldn't feel like there's an unaccountable occupying force in our communities, with an us-versus-them mentality, the same as if for Baghdad, or Saigon, or any other city the military has occupied over the decades and seen its inhabitants as another. So let me ask you this. Do you really trust our military to report all war crimes that are committed by a few bad apple soldiers overseas? Or the ones that are ordered, like bombing weddings or hospitals? Are you so naive to think that that doesn't happen? If you trust the military, aka the world's police, to police itself, how can you trust the police to police themselves? Because, to be honest, if you think military or the police can police themselves, then you're a damn fool or a sycophant. And if you believe that, you probably also believe Wall Street can regulate itself and fossil fuel companies, because apparently we haven't figured that out either, especially since all of them have shown us that they are incapable of doing it so many times. Executive Pittman quoted MLK when he spoke Saturday, saying, "The time is always right to do what is right." Do you feel you're doing what is right? If so, for who? And if not, what's holding you back? Is it a fear of losing reelection or gaining higher office? Because if you're scared of that, because you only care about getting reelected, then you don't deserve to be elected in the first case. As I said the previous times, I testify, this is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to give the communities that have been wronged and abused by police a little justice and accountability moving forward, which is imperative if you truly want to try and restore trust. Your actions, again, will tell the tale. Get on the right side of history. And if you need any more clarity on what is right that we have not provided, you know how to reach us. But just in case there's any doubt, we'll probably be making sure you understand how bad you're betraying the community in the coming weeks. See you soon.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. I'll make one final call for anyone who would like to come down and testify on Bill 16-22, and I see a couple. Oh. Let's see, is anyone coming our way? Reverend Morris, you testified already.
I have a question, though.
That's out of order right now. We can't take questions. We're in the middle of a public hearing. I'm sorry.
Do you have an instant?
No.
Confirmation to the panel?
Send us an email. Mr. Holt, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. My name is Arthur Holt. I live at 8 Fisk Circle, Annapolis, Maryland. And thank you, everybody, for your service. I appreciate it. This is an important discussion, and I am here testifying against the bill, the Police Accountability Bill, as currently written. I would be in favor if all of the amendments suggested by the Coalition for Police Accountability Bill for Anarundel County were included. I'm gonna make it pretty quick, I think, and I know that many of the Black and Brown people in this room, and many of the White people, too, I think that everyone is familiar with a song that, that starts out "We Shall Overcome." And, and there are a lot of people, a lot of families that have ancestors in this room that have been singing that song for a really long time, a really long time, and the word is always "someday." So I'd like to offer the suggestion, let's make that, change that word "someday" to "today." I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. One final call. All right. At this time, the public hearing on Bill Number 16-22, as amended, is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 16-22 as amendment, as amended.
Bill Number 1622, An Ordinance Concerning Police Accountability Board.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read, we've got several amendments this evening, so we'll go as quickly as we can, and I ask my colleagues to do the same, because we still have a few items after this bill. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 45.
Amendment Number 45. This amendment corrects trial boards to be hearing boards and adds the specific powers and duties of the Administrative Charging Committee as provided for in state law.
Thank you. And this is an amendment from Ms. Lacy and myself. Ms. Lacy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this amendment and a couple of subsequent ones look similar. They're going to repeat this language here, so I think that's more about the structure of how we adopt amendments than, than really about the substance of this amendment. This, this amendment focuses on, just as a starting place, adding in the language from the state code about how an administrative charging committee is supposed to work, because my thinking was, putting that into our bill, I know we can, we can diverge whether we cite to state law or whether we copy and state law, but if, in this case, I thought it would add to clarity, and literally, we could all, we could be on the same page, looking at our law and seeing within it what the Administrative Charging Committee can do. So with that, I move the amendment.
And I'll just, as a co-sponsor, add on to what my colleague said. The idea is that when you are reviewing a law, it's much easier if everything is right there on one page for you. You don't have to jump to different books. You don't have to link to different pages and try and figure out how it reads coherently. This just makes it coherent, so understandable for anyone who reads it. Mr. Barron, the administration is welcome to respond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We would agree that it does make it easier to read, but the downside of that is it doesn't flow with changes that may come at the state law. So, I think, as you've heard, HB 670 built a framework. It may be changed in coming sessions with the General Assembly. So, our preference is to leave it as the bill was amended, where it does it by citation, but it's more of a stylistic objection to make sure that our code changes with state law. Understand, the clarity argument does have merit.
Point of order, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
There wasn't a second.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
You can second.
I'll second. Is that why you were giving me a funny look before? All right. Any comments or questions for my colleagues? Mr. Pruski.
Yeah, this was the same objection I brought up last time, that if the state does change the law, Ms. Clausmeyer, am I correct that we'd have to go through and update it again, where if you just cite the section of the code, if the state updated dates it, it's there? I understand the intended purpose, but again, when we write laws, we go to the section. I just want to clarify, so that we're clear for people, again, what's there. I respect the intention, but I'm just asking you that if you just said, okay, it's section, if I'm reading this correctly, you know, set forth in Title III, Subtitle I, the Public Safety Article of the State Code. If we use that, and then the other section, that would say you'd revert, because if the state, as was, we're waiting for an Attorney General opinion. So, if you could repeat that, I appreciate that.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I agree with the sponsors of this amendment, that it is strictly stylistic, and it does, it certainly does help the, the reader of our code understand the way the state has created the framework of police accountability in general. I am torn on this, because we know the, the General Assembly is currently still amending this bill to all of our frustration. This is, this plane is still being built, as we're trying to fly it here in the county council. But I actually think, because of the section at the end, where the state is clear about where they have given investigatory and subpoena power to the Administrative Charging Commission, that it does make sense, at this point at least, to add it to our code. Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions for my colleagues? I'll just say to my colleagues, I have full confidence that if we need to update this bill to reflect the state, state, new state law, that we are capable of doing it, and I ask for your support. With that said, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 45.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Feidler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Raffian.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number 45 is adopted.
All right. Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 46.
Amendment Number 46. This amendment prohibits a resolution to confirm the appointment of members to the Police Accountability Board from being voted on immediately, and requires a public hearing before a final vote by the council.
All right. There are multiple sponsors, but it looks like Ms. Pickard, you are the lead sponsor here, so you may make a brief statement.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. This amendment does exactly what Ms. Corby just read, but for clarification, or I actually think the, the bill language, which I'm looking for on Page 5, does help for the public. Ultimately, we want the resolution that is appointing PAB members, we do, the council does, like we did tonight, we can bring a resolution, we can introduce a resolution on the same night as we vote on it, like we did tonight with, but for the, the point of a resolution that is going to appoint PAB members, I think the majority of the council, as they are sponsors of this, believe we should, that a resolution appointing board versus to the PAB should be out in the public for a certain amount of time before it's voted on. So that's what this amendment does. Motion to adopt.
Second. And Mr. Barron, would the administration like to respond?
The administration supports the amendment. As Councilwoman Pickard described, it was the intention of the administration when we introduced the bill to ensure public participation, win appointments to the board- we introduced the bill to ensure public participation when appointments to the board are made. This amendment makes that crystal clear. We support.
Mr. Volkey.
Just ready to vote.
Oh, all right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 46, seeing no other lights.
Sorry.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Shocker.
Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 46 has been adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 47.
Amendment Number 47. This amendment requires a drug test and a reference check in order to serve as a voting member on the Police Accountability Board.
Thank you. Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment. You may make a brief statement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So this amendment is self-explanatory in the summary, but this amendment and the following two really come from the same train of thought. We've heard a lot of talk about other professions that have some type of peer review investigation when there's some kind of accusation. Understanding that the state has removed the immediate review from peers, I thought it was important to put the basic standards on par with the standards that are required to be a law enforcement officer in our county. And with that, motion to adopt.
Hare, second. All right. Mr. Barron, would the administration like to make a comment on this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The administration understands where the sponsor is coming from. We struggled mightily to balance, and I think you heard some testimony tonight, that people feel we went a little too far in one direction. We believe this amendment goes too far in the other direction, the other other direction. So at this time, we oppose.
Mr. Pruski.
Ms. Klosmeyer, for the Board of Appeals, for the Human Relations Commission, I could go through all of them. Do we drug test people, or obviously have a review?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are the council members required to be drug tested in order to serve on the council? Is there any requirement in the charter or code that we have to take drug tests?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional comments or questions for my colleagues? With that, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 47.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Amendment Number 47 has been defeated.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 48.
Amendment Number 48. This amendment requires certain minimum educational standards in order to serve as a voting member on the Police Accountability Board.
Again, Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment. You may make a brief statement. Oh, I'm sorry, wait. I'm really determined, no, 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 you, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. Same idea as the one before. This is the requirement to be a law enforcement officer in Anorondo County, and I thought it was fair to put it on par as a background standard. Motion to adopt.
Hare, second. Mr. Barron, you may have the floor to respond for the administration.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Same objection as the previous amendment.
All right. Any additional, Ms. Pickard?
Oh, no.
Nope.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Just briefly, I think the general direction that we are going in selecting members of the PAB is that our judgment, the county executive's judgment and our judgment, are ultimately what gets relied on. And I thought it was very impactful when Apostle Palmer shared that he wouldn't be able to serve on our PAB as this bill is currently written. I think the same thing about an education requirement. Well, I can, I can see that it makes sense, but it does so from a check-the-box perspective, and would allow us to cut out people who might serve very well, even though they don't have a high school education or GED. So I can't support this amendment.
Any other comments for my colleagues? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 48.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number 48 has been defeated.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 49.
Amendment Number 49. This amendment disqualifies an applicant from being appointed to the Police Accountability Board if the person has been convicted of, pled guilty to, or received probation before judgment for certain crimes.
Again, Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. The summary is pretty self-explanatory to include domestic violence, PBJ, and felony in Maryland. Motion to adopt.
Hare, second. Thank you. Mr. Barron, you may respond on behalf of the administration.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As with the previous amendments, the administration tried very hard to balance the requirements, because there are people who have reformed, but we felt it was important to draw a line somewhere. We are comfortable with where we drew our line.
Any additional comments or questions for my colleagues? Seeing no lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 49.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number 49 has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Let's see. Let's see, are we introducing Amendment Number 50?
No, you need to go to, I think that you want to withdraw 50 and go to 51, because Amendment 45 passed.
Well, I trust you, Madam Secretary. I have no idea where we are. What's your 51?
Amendment Number 50, if you adopt it, it will not play nicely with Amendment Number 45 that you just adopted.
Oh, right.
So 51 works.
Okay.
So thank you for the explanation and keeping us on track here. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 51.
Amendment Number 51. This amendment corrects trial boards to be hearing boards, adds the specific powers and duties of the Administrative Charging Committee as provided for in state law, and limits the terms of the members of the Administrative Charging Committee to three years.
Madam Chair?
Yes. So Amendment 51, the real, the main thing to focus on for Amendment 51 is that Paragraph 6 on the second page, just above B, which is the addition of a requirement that is not found in the state law, that a member of the Administrative Charging Committee may not serve more than one three-year term. I pored over our bill, and one of the things that we have been trying to do is ensure that we have appropriate checks and balances on both selecting the members of the PAB, and then since the chair of the PAB works with the members, that person serves on the Administrative Charging Committee, and the whole PAB selects two members, two civilians, to serve on the Administrative Charging Committee. Given the terms, the term limits that we put in for PAB members, I think it, I think it would be a better service to the community to have just one shorter term that an ACC member can serve, so there's more turnover, which leads to more chances for people to participate and more points of view available to the ACC. And with that, I move the amendment.
Radvian, second. And Mr. Barron, you may respond on behalf of the administration.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Understand the purpose of the sponsor's amendment, appreciate the discussions that we have had in the run-up to this, but I think you've heard us say this before, this creates an inconsistency with state law, and we would prefer that the council reject this amendment.
Any additional comments or questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 51.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number 51 has failed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 52.
Amendment Number 52. This amendment requires a complaint filed with a law enforcement agency to be forwarded to the Police Accountability Board within three days of receipt of the complaint.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So this amendment, I think it would be helpful to mirror the requirement that the, that when the PAB receives a complaint, it has three days to forward that complaint to the appropriate law enforcement agency. Meanwhile, there's no requirement that the LEA forward a complaint that it receives to the PAB. And I think that if, as we're going to continue debating what the PAB can and can't do, one of the things we know it clearly can do is review the outcomes of disciplinary proceedings. And I think it would be fair and helpful for the PAB to have a contemporaneous view of what is, what is happening, whether or not they're investigating it. They can, I think they can be more functional, more helpful, if they know what's going on at a more general level, and they can track whether a complaint has been resolved or not. So with that, I move the amendment.
Radvian, second. And Mr. Barron, you may respond.
So again, I think Councilwoman Lacy is hitting on an issue that I don't think the state thought through in HB 670. No offense if the delegate is still in the room. The issue that you're raising is important. How does the PAB know, the way the state law operates, they would only know the outcomes because the ACC issues their written report? However, the county doesn't have the authority to regulate external law enforcement agencies. We cannot dictate to the city of Annapolis that you do something. So the issue here is we are, it won't function in relation to state law and how the local, local control works, but I think you're hitting on a very important point that I hope the state will take up and fix, that would require LEAs, and they might be able to do this through regulation, that they would forward that complaint to the PAB. So I think this is an important issue, but we just don't think it is appropriate for our bill.
Madam Chair, may I respond?
Just, go ahead.
Thank you. I think the point about what the Training Standards Commission is going to do is very well-taken, and actually, I think it's forward-thinking, how this is written, because it refers generally to a law enforcement agency, which is going to be defined in the regulations that we don't yet have, but were promised to us so long ago so that we wouldn't be sitting here tonight figuring this out. And if we make this narrower than the term "law enforcement agency," as we write it, we will have to come back in amendment. If we leave it as "law enforcement agency," and it's somehow unenforceable, it'll still be enforceable as to the Anorondo County Police, which is what I argued at our last meeting, and so I ask for everyone's support.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we had this question come up earlier, and this is to Chief Awad. If we pass this law and we said to the Crofton Police Department, "We would like you to submit in three days," do they have to give it to us? Do you have any oversight over the Crofton Police Department?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay. Also, and I just want to ask a legitimate question, because this is similar to the blueprint that's being discussed with education right now, about, you know, the realities in a classroom and what's occurring. Is three days enough? I mean, again, you might not have that answer. What does it typically take, three, seven, for someone to, you know, submit a report or whatever else? That's the other question from you on the ground. Do you have an opinion on that?
I really can't say. I don't know. I guess it would depend on the volume that we have coming in, you know, to our department at the time.
If I may, Councilman Volkey.
Councilman Pruski.
Oh, sorry.
It's the red tie.
It's okay. It is the tie. So I will, I will say, the Police Accountability Board will have to forward that complaint within three days to the LEA. So I think this amendment, respectfully to what Councilwoman Lacy is attempting to do here, the, it is achievable, because we have to do it on the other side of the process. So it's just forwarding the complaint. I think, you know, we prefer that this not be in the bill, but I think our opposition is pretty soft on it, if you can tell. Thank you.
Any additional questions for my colleagues? Go ahead, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey. I guess the question that I would have is, part of the way that the Police Accountability Board is going to find out what's going on with these complaints, even if they don't come to them directly, is that they're going to get reports, right? I thought that was the whole purpose, is they're getting reports, they're going to make recommendations, all of that. So even if they don't get it directly, I think they're still going to know about what's going on. Am I understanding that correctly in the way the structure is set up?
If I may, Councilman.
Go ahead.
Councilman Volkey. Yes, the, but to the point here, those reports will come at the completion of the Administrative Charging Committee's process. So that's, I think, the nuance there.
I'm going to chime in here for a second. I'm just really struggling with this whole idea that the county wouldn't have oversight over, or authority in this situation, in this narrow situation. It seems like the state, you know, in crafting this law and making the requirements that the county, you know, for example, is the body that appoints the entity that reviews a complaint for not only the county police department, but the other law enforcement agencies in our boundaries. It just does, I don't, I can't imagine that we don't have the authority to do simple things like that, you know, to require them to, you know, participate in the process, whatever we decide that process is. So I'm really struggling with that argument, that this is somehow something we don't have the authority to do. Mr. Pruski.
Yeah. Madam Chair, again, this is my social studies teacher coming in, I'm sorry, but like, when municipalities are founded in Maryland, and there's a lot more in Prince George's versus Anorondo, they get a charter through the state. They get approved. So it's technically a state approval, just like our Board of Education's and Independent State Agency. And I get frustrated, too, sometimes, because people ask me, "Well, I live in the city of Annapolis, why can't you have your, the Anorondo Liquor Board help me with something?" And they're totally two different, separate things, or zoning, or whatever other laws. So the charter itself, and I know I'm speaking the vernacular, there's a lot of attorneys here, I'm only one that plays on TV, but essentially, it's one of those things that the state gives you the authority to allow you to have that municipality. So when I mention the fact that, you know, Crofton, again, has their own independent agency, they hire their chief, they have their town board, same with Annapolis. So even though maybe the intention might have been the county law to, you know, to do that, and I'm as frustrated as you are, but I think that's, that's where it hits the road.
Oh, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So if this amendment were to pass, and there was a complaint forwarded to the PAB, the PAB could only read it, they couldn't take, make any recommendations until a full investigation, and we have trending reports that are given to the PAB. It would just be a point of information, almost.
I think that's correct. I think the, you know, if Office of Law has anything to add, I think the purpose, though, if I can put words in the sponsor's mouth, is that you want to make sure that when complaints are filed, that they're followed up on. And to Councilwoman Radvian's point, we can mandate through the Administrative Charging Committee that they have to respond, and that is in the state law, that we, that the Administrative Charging Committee and the LEA have to be, complete their work within a year and a day. So there is that ability to do that. The question here is mandating a law enforcement agency that is outside of the regulation of the county to produce something to our board, and I think we all share the sort of, if I had any hair, I'd pull it out on the, on this particular issue.
I'll just say, I'm not pulling my hair out, because to me, when the state passed this law, asking the counties to do this, they're giving the counties certain powers, and so we don't need to, you know, have every single little detail. We know, we've discussed, that this bill does not lay out every single detail, and And therefore, I don't think we need to assume that the state would have had to individually and separately delegate every single possible power that the county might need in order to implement this. So I'm still not buying the argument that the county can't do this. But see, oh, Mr. Volkey.
I disagree with you. I, I do agree with you, that's not disagree. I was saying, I just agree with you. I think you're right. I think we can pass it. And if, if the other agencies say they don't want to do it, they're going to tell us. Annapolis City is going to say, you can't regulate us, forget what you put in your law, so.
And I would hope the state would say, guys, of course you have to respond to it, that's the, that's the law. So with that, seeing no additional, oh, I'll let our representative from the city of Annapolis, Ms. McCoy, you may weigh in.
I just want to let you know that this may work itself out in logistics. And I know that you want to put it in code, but remember, and this is what I've been, you know, like kind of pressing, that we get through, that we work, we get a, we get a law because we have to work out all the internal logistics. Our systems, I imagine that this would be some type of internal electronic systems have to talk with each other. And so if I put something in and we set it up with the Accountability Board, they're going to automatically know. And so I just, before you all, you know, put it into a code and it gets, you know, you know, could be argued later, remember that systems have to be built behind this and that our system needs to talk to the Accountability Board. How am I going to get my information over to you? How are you going to get it to me? How's it going to go to the ACC? It stands to reason that you would already know this.
Thank you. And I would once again say that it's our responsibility as the council to say what we want those systems to do. We want to make sure that those systems respond or provide a copy of the complaint. I mean, I think we're literally talking about something that could be done in an email or a photocopy walked, you know, we're, they're just, you know, the city of Annapolis Police is just a few blocks. I could ride my bike there in 45 seconds. No, not that fast, but it's close. Anyway, so I hope you will support this amendment. I think it's a very reasonable, to make sure that complaints are handed in both directions. Seeing no additional lights. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment 52.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Amendment number 52 is adopted. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number 53.
Amendment number 53. This amendment requires the annual ride-along that members of the Police Accountability Board must complete to be in the emergency vehicle of a county police officer or other law enforcement officer in the county.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This amendment corrects, I don't even know what amendment it was, somewhere in the beginning. It was early. I think it was a single-digit numbered amendment that had, basically that you could ride along with firefighter or paramedic or other emergency personnel. This just clarifies that the ride-along needs to be with a law enforcement officer as opposed to with another first responder or emergency personnel type. I think that that's appropriate if we are talking about the type of experience that people should have to then be able to sit in judgment effectively of, of other law enforcement. You should have to at least be with law enforcement. So with that, I would move the amendment and ask for my colleague's support.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Barron, you may respond on behalf of the administration.
Administration supports.
Any additional comments from my colleagues? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number 53. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 53 is adopted. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number 54. Amendment.
I'm just, I'll withdraw 54 to 56 to speed things up.
54 and 56?
54, 55, 56.
54 through 56, all right. I appreciate that. I'm sure we all appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Actually, I think I, I will withdraw Amendment number 57. Since we passed, yes, we passed number 52, and this is, okay. I'm going to withdraw 57, and then we go on to 58. Oh, this is my amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number 58.
Amendment number 58. This amendment requires an annual report or other reports created by the Police Accountability Board to be shared in a timely manner with the county executive and the county council and available for viewing at all Anarundel County public libraries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. So as the sponsor of this amendment, the idea is to just make sure that the work of the Police Accountability Board is as transparent as possible. Presumably, all of these documents would be accessible via an NPIA request anyway, so let's just put them out there and make sure the public can access them very easily without having to go through any red tape. And with that, I move the amendment.
Second, Councilman Pruski.
Thank you. And Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I, I think this is an important amendment, I should say, we think this is an important amendment. These reports are intended to be public. A requirement to make them a little more public, we support.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number 58. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 58 is adopted. Thank you, Madam Secretary. I will be withdrawing Amendment number 59. And that brings us to Amendment number 60. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number 60.
Amendment number 60. This amendment prohibits a spouse, sibling, parent, stepparent, child, stepchild, foster child, or step sibling of an actively serving police officer from serving as a voting member on the Police Accountability Board.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. So this is one of the, one of the requests of the coalition. I think it's a very reasonable one. If the idea is to ensure that the Police Accountability Board, you know, is, is removed from bias, this basically takes immediate family members out of eligibility for the Police Accountability Board. And I, just, so you're familiar with the process of the drafting here? We found every possible relation, a family familial relation, and we went through yes, no, for all of the ones you could think of, cousins, aunts, uncles, you know, I don't know, you can think of plenty. And we basically narrowed it down to the ones that are spouse, sibling, parent, or child, or the very close, you know, you can see we've got stepchild or foster child. And so those, we obviously don't want to make it too broad, otherwise, you know, if you said anybody who has a cousin who's in law enforcement, probably three-quarters of the room would be ineligible. So it's, you know, making sure that we have a good pool of people, but, you know, people that have very, very close personal interest. So with that, I move the amendment.
Second, Lacy.
And Mr. Barron, you may have the floor.
The administration opposes the amendment. I think we, we have all struggled with what the right balance of eligibility should be for this board. We think this amendment goes too far.
Any additional comments or questions from my colleagues? Mr. Pruski.
Ms. Klasmaier, sorry to put you on the spot again. I had a question about this. So if somebody is in the military police, oversea-serving, this says a member of the, or an active police officer, they would be precluded from serving. Am I correct? Because it doesn't clarify Anarundel, Crofton, Annapolis, it just says a police officer. So you could be military, Coast Guard, anything, okay.
California.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And that is the intent of the sponsor as well. Mr. Volkey.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I, I think, I understand the idea of where the sponsors want to go. The one point that I would make is oftentimes when we're looking at where to draw the line on conflicts of interest, we typically look at people who are affected directly or have some kind of pecuniary interest. I'm not sure that I would go quite this far to say that these folks are directly impacted by a police officer's interests, if that makes sense. I think, I think you can make the argument, but I'm, I'm not sure that I get there. So I think that's the concern that I have with this amendment, is that it is a bit far in terms of where you all are going.
Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Ms. Pickard.
I just want to point out, I, I agree, I think it goes too far. And, and some of my reasoning behind that is because many of the people that have come to testify before us have mentioned all the family members that they have that are law enforcement. So I just think we're, we're narrowing the pool of applicants a little too far as we, as we keep adding these stipulations.
Seeing no comments or no additional lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number 60. Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Amendment number 60 has been defeated. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number 61.
Amendment number 61. This amendment removes the prohibition against a person being appointed as a voting member of the Police Accountability Board if they have been convicted of certain crimes, and removes superfluous language that allows appointment of a person who is not subject to the earlier stated prohibition.
Thank you. Once again, this is my amendment with Councilwoman Lacy. The idea here is to just pull all the arbitrary barriers out and recognize that people are complicated human beings and that they're not defined easily by something simple. Like, we heard Bishop Palmer mention that he would be ineligible to serve on the Police Accountability Board. People are more than their worst day. And if they are not more than their worst day, I think we are fully capable of identifying that and recognizing that when we go through the process of deciding whether or not to appoint someone. You can, you know, you can see in many cases that a person that has some sort of criminal record has really redeemed themselves and really, you know, sort of asked for forgiveness, taken all the steps to sort of become whole again. Others may not have that level of depth, and I think that's something we can tease out in the process of selecting rather than using arbitrary, you know, arbitrary markers that may eliminate people that would be excellent members of the Police Accountability Board. So with that, I move the amendment.
Lacy, second.
And Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is a difficult amendment because I think we've heard of, of folks who have, have rehabilitated, who, who could contribute. This, this still, we felt when we drafted the bill, that we had to draw a line somewhere. And, and the administration is comfortable with where we drew the line. Understand that reasonable people can and will disagree on this issue, but we oppose the amendment.
Any additional comments or questions from my colleagues? Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, District 2. This has, this entire drafting of this bill has been incredibly stressful. But I think we've, we've struck a balance with all of our amendments that have come before us between ex-officio members and voting members and, and different characteristics of, of voting members. And one of the ways we did that through the amendment process was adding a public comment period to the PAB so that anyone from the public can participate and weigh in as they are deliberating policy recommendations to our local chiefs of, chiefs of police as they make police policy. So with that, I, I oppose this amendment.
Any additional comments or questions? I'll just conclude with saying I'm not comfortable with a, a set of criteria that would exclude someone like Bishop Palmer. I just don't believe that's the right thing to do. But seeing no additional lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll. Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment number 61 is defeated. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number 62.
Amendment number 62. This amendment allows participation in a ride-along as part of training of the voting members as an option.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I can tell my voice is getting a little scratchy, so it needed some refreshment. So one of the comments that I heard when we initially added the, we, I think this was in our first round of amendments, we amended the bill to include a requirement that members of the PAB participate in a ride-along. And one of the pieces of feedback that I got, of course, you know, our amendments aren't always, you know, reviewed ahead of time by the public, but one of the pieces of feedback that I got afterwards is that being required to participate in a ride-along could be traumatic or triggering for someone, and that someone should be able to participate in the process of being a PAB without having to subject themselves to trauma or a triggering experience. And so with that, I respectfully move the amendment and request your support.
Second, Lacy.
Thank you. And Mr. Barron, you may respond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Understand that this is a difficult thing, but the men and women that do this job every day don't have a choice. So if you are going to sit on this board, we believe that a ride-along once a year is something that you should have to experience. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Yes. Perhaps the chief could speak to this, but for folks who watch body camera footage, I know it's not, it's not, I'm not saying it's equivalent to a ride-along at all, but at least the body camera footage that I've watched so far has been extremely informative. And I think if I, if I were to, if I personally were to say, I am uncomfortable doing a ride-along, but I could sit and watch, you know, five hours of body camera footage and then sit down with an officer to talk through it and talk through a day and what happened, that I could probably, as a civilian, get a substantially equivalent experience for purposes of serving on the PAB. What do you think?
I think the purpose is to see through the eyes of the officer. And there are situations where you have a bit of notice because you're familiar with the types of calls for service you'll be riding on. I think it should be embraced as an educational opportunity. And if a person elects not to be a part of a certain call for service, they can certainly say, I'm not comfortable with getting out of the car and observing X. So I, I think that it should be embraced as an opportunity to see the reality of what officers face every day.
Thank you. Ms. Pickard.
Well, I believe Mr. Volkey had a slide on.
I am so sorry. I just thought I saw yours first. Mr. Volkey, you have the floor.
It's all right, thank you. I just, I struggle to see how it would be equivalent to watch body cam footage versus being in the field with a police officer, just as I struggle to believe that me watching an interaction with a police officer and some of the stories and, and personal experiences that we've heard from people, if I were to watch those, it's certainly not the same as me experiencing it. And so I think the idea of trying to say that we're going to substitute video for what's happening in real life, I, I just don't think that's a one-to-one. So I think that's the struggle that I have with this amendment. And I, I think that if we don't sort of keep this in here, I think there's a very important experiential component to serving on this board that's being lost.
I don't know who, it was Ms. Pickard? All right, Ms. Pickard, you may go ahead. You'll be next.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't often agree with my colleague, colleague to my right, but I do here today. I've experienced a ride-along myself before getting elected, and I did just that, chief. I chose not to get out of the car several times. I wasn't all equipped. But I also, I, I understand, I certainly understand the premise of someone fearing that this could be a traumatic experience, but if that is the case, I don't see how sitting on the Police Accountability Board where you are going to be viewing body camera footage and reliving certain experiences between the public and, and police wouldn't also be somewhat traumatic. And why would you, why would you even put yourself there? I don't think a ride-along is, I've seen body camera footage and I'm, I'm still, it still weighs on me. And that ride-along is long gone. So I don't, I think a ride-along is an important component of understanding what our law enforcement do every day.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So I'm going to echo some of the comments already made. I also did a ride-along shortly after being elected. I still talk about it to this day. Watching on a screen in the safety, or comfort, I should say, of a seat in some location is so much different than riding in a vehicle on the scene of whatever. It can be, you know, something you hear about all the time when you think of law enforcement, or it could be an officer interacting with a kid who just wants to talk to an officer. And you can see those engaging moments, too. I've had the privilege of seeing some of those moments at my, at the, you know, local elementary schools. So I just think that there's really amazing opportunities to see amazing interactions, but also opportunities to have a whole, a whole different understanding of what the job entails from the moment our officers put on their uniforms until the end of a shift.
Madam Chair. Go ahead, Ms. Lacy.
Thank you. What I was getting at with my question about substantial equivalence of watching body camera footage is not so much about, you know, whether, say, a person like me could watch from the comfort of my own home and then go have lunch with the police officer and go over everything I saw in the body camera footage than it is to recognize that we're talking about hopefully reaching a diverse group of people who also have a capacity, preferably a large capacity, for empathy and who can use their own inquisitiveness, their curiosity, their desire to understand this very complex human world that they are stepping up to try to serve in, and that they shouldn't be forced to do a ride-along. They should be able to have the opportunity to choose to do one. And perhaps the council could come along later and say, "You know what? We've had a PAB for three years, and it's actually not working well because not enough people went and did ride-alongs." Well, they can always add ride-alongs, but you're also, you're, by voting for this, for, by voting against this amendment, then you are not giving recognition and dignity to a person's choice who would want to serve but for the fact that they just don't want to do the ride-along for whatever that reason is.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. And I'll just add one thought. I think one of the concerns I have about a ride-along is that when we're talking about this process, we're talking about a process that has two possible outcomes. And in fact, it's very laid out, it's very clearly laid out in the state bill and on our bill, that we're talking about complaints about police misconduct. And in the end, police is either administratively charged or not administratively charged. So we are looking at a procedure here where, you know, presumably, as the officer goes through their day with a person participating in the ride-along, they're not going to engage in any misconduct where they would, you know, end up, go through this process and be administratively charged. And so for that reason, we, it's unbalanced. There's no way for someone to, so we want to, we want to have the empathy where we put someone in the shoes of what it's like to be a police officer. But I think in order to be balanced, we would need to have some way, and I don't think there is a way, to have someone experience what it's like to be the victim of police misconduct. So the idea that we're kind of putting, you know, we're kind of putting our thumb on the scale on one side, and there's no way, you know, to replicate that on the other side, creates an inequity in the way you're, we're balancing the system. And that's why I really believe this amendment is important. It still allows a ride-along, you know, it certainly doesn't forbid it, but it says this is not a requirement because there's no way to say, "Hey, we'd like you to participate in the, let's be a victim of police misconduct" ride-along. That's just not a possibility. And so if we're only allowing the person insight into one side, one possible outcome, then we're sort of putting more evidence on one side of the scale than we are on the other. And I think if we want to be fair and equitable, we need to have the scales evenly balanced. So with that, I ask for your support. Seeing no additional lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 62.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Amendment Number 62 has been defeated.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read Amendment Number 63.
Amendment Number 63. This amendment requires the Police Accountability Board to investigate complaints it receives independently and concurrently with other internal investigations.
All right. Thank you very much. Again, I'm the sponsor on this amendment, and basically it does exactly what our Madam Secretary just read. It allows for concurrent investigations. One of the biggest ways to ensure that the public will trust the process is that it is independent. I have heard over and over the phrase, "We cannot trust the police to police themselves." Well, maybe we can. Maybe we could. Maybe we can. And maybe in our police department, we have, you know, police that would absolutely step up to the highest possible standards. But we need to write the law, assuming that we may not. And we have to account for that situation. We may have to, in fact, we don't even have to go very far back in our county's history to unfortunately identify a pretty ugly police misconduct in terms of, you know, participating in political activities is the one I'm thinking of. And so, you know, the idea that you shouldn't have someone independent, I mean, you know, we talk about, like in a, and I know this is not a criminal process, but I, just for the sake of an analogy, you know, in a criminal trial, we talk about a jury of our peers, but we don't literally mean like the people that are the colleagues of or the people that are friends of. We still have someone who don't know the individuals or someone who comes from, you know, could come from very different backgrounds. And so the idea of an independent investigation is so important to real trusted police accountability. I feel like there will be no trust from the communities that have the greatest distrust without this amendment. And I know we've heard the Office of Law say that this amendment isn't allowed by state law. Well, we've heard contradictory opinions from our state delegates. And we've heard that this is actually a question being raised to the Attorney General by one of our state delegates. This topic of police accountability, the last time we had this was, I believe, 1974, when we really took a thorough look at police accountability with the LEOBR. That was 48 years ago. If we don't put some real teeth in this, is our next chance to have real teeth and real accountability that the community will fully trust? What if that's another 48 years? This is our chance right now to make sure that, and honestly, the police benefit from it, in my opinion. You know, if the, if the community doesn't trust the process, then that does nothing to break down the mistrust that we have of police. So with that, I move the amendment.
Second, Lacy.
Thank you. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this is an important discussion to have. I think we've had this discussion in previous meetings. We have looked at this closely. I think there is, there is a framework built by HB 670. That framework, I think we can all agree, still needs some work. The interpretation of the Office of Law and the administration is that we need to structure the framework whereby the Police Accountability Board appoints the majority of the membership of the Administrative Charging Committee. The Administrative Charging Committee reviews and adjudicates and recommends discipline, issues a public written report if, however that case comes out. If you recall the flow chart from the PowerPoint that we put together at the beginning of this, that is the structure that HB 670 reached out. And our, our interpretation is that this is inconsistent with state law, and we ask that you defeat the amendment.
Mr. Pruski.
Thank you again. And this is, I don't know how many emails we've gotten back and forth, trying to figure this out, but Lori Blair Klosmeyer, again, Ms. Klosmeyer. Absent an Attorney General opinion, we have to go based upon the law that was passed. Correct? I know there was statements made that, and we've, I've seen several attorney, we just had a court case with redistricting, that an opinion's going to go and it gets, you know, reviewed and opted on. So just to be clear in the vernacular, you know, as you stated prior, that absent of Attorney General opinion, clarifying what's the floor and what's the ceiling, we're interpreting what was sent to us. Correct? Can you clarify that for everyone here? Because I think that, and again, I'm not saying misconception, confusion, but it is. It's just, it's unclear, and somebody could legally challenge it, you know, whether an officer or community member and say, "Well, you just spent all this time creating this bill." Then they take it to court, they throw it out, and then this whole process is thrown out. And that's unfair to the community and everyone here. We're spending time having these debates, going through everything, and I'm getting frustrated because I got people on different sides. But I just want to be clear from you, because you have to represent, represent us in court, just like I'm getting sued by the gun manufacturers or whoever right now. So can you please, again, clarify, you know, what?
That's correct. So as Mr. Barron said, the framework, and if you remember back to the very first night, he did the little slideshow with the little boxes and, you know, arrows and et cetera. The framework is that the administrative, that the law enforcement agency investigates in the Administrative Charging Committee. The report goes, the Administrative Charging Committee, and charges go from there. The PAB is not giving any investigatory powers, or their powers are very clearly set out in that. And while, you know, yeah, we can debate the floor and the ceiling, but I don't, but the structure they have set up does not include the PAB as an investigatory body. No matter how desirable that an independent investigation may be, the state did not give that to us. And so unless the Attorney General comes forward and says that we're wrong or that you have that power or, you know, and there's a change in the state law at the General Assembly, I think we're stuck with the structure that was set up in Bill 670.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This has been, we've actually debated this already, maybe twice, since this bill's been introduced. And we've had lengthy discussion through other amendments regarding the conflicts that we end up in with the procedures of filing complaints when, for example, the AG's office is in control of the investigation when it's an issue of deadly force. And so while I know that there are coalition members here who've been advocating, not just here, but they spent all of last year advocating in front of the General Assembly, it seems what we have been handed is a compilation, I'm, that's not the right word, but I'm so tired, but.
Compilation.
A compilation, thank you, of police reform that is embodied in several bills. The AG independent investigation of the use of deadly force in the state of Maryland. Then we have this entire framework of the PAB, the Administrative Charging Commission, and trial boards. And then we have the one I can't ever remember, the Maryland Police Training Commission, Standards Commission, that hasn't even completed their work, that will continue to inform police reform as it looks in 2022 in the state of Maryland. And here, this body, along with 24 other jurisdictions around the state, are trying to stand up what the General Assembly produced out of the 21 session. And there's not a single jurisdiction yet, separate from Baltimore City, which is a completely different, under completely different state law, that has given the PAB investigatory powers. And it's my understanding it's because they exist in the Charging Commission. And while I understand that there are disappointed and frustrated coalition members in this room tonight, I don't see how we move there. If the General Assembly wants to change the way they set up this framework, then they need to change their law. With that, I oppose Amendment 63.
Any other questions or colleagues, or, excuse me, questions or comments from my I will just say one last time, this is our chance for real independence, for real accountability, for something that's trustworthy to the community. And with that, I ask for your support. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment 63.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian.
I'm going to vote aye, but I just want to ask my colleagues to think about, if we do get that opinion back from the AG's office saying that what I'm suggesting is allowed, I very likely am going to bring this one more time and ask for you to reconsider your opinions on this topic. Thank you. Madam Secretary, oh, and aye was my vote. Madam Secretary, please, let's see, what are we doing with 64, 65, and 66?
So.
64?
Let me just read the tally for the vote, just for the record, for Amendment 63.
Oh, so sorry.
That's okay. It was two in the negative, two in the positive, sorry, two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Amendment Number 63 was defeated. And now 64 and 65 and 66, Madam Chair, they all rely on 63 in one form or another.
Okay. So since 63 failed, we should appropriately withdraw 64 through 66. All right, thank you. All right.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Before we proceed to the next bills, may we make a motion for a 10-minute recess?
That would be fine. Why don't we?
Second.
Before we do that, why don't we close out this section of the bill? Because, you know, it's just the stating when it'll be heard and all that. Okay, so since we have had amendments on Bill 16-22, as amended, and now amended again, it will be heard again on April 18, 2022. And with that, let's take our 10-minute recess. Or, let's see, it's 9:48, let's call it 12 minutes and be back at exactly 10:00 PM. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We are going to resume our meeting, come to order. At this time, we are going to move on to Bill number twenty-four dash twenty-two. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number twenty-four dash twenty-two.
Bill number twenty-four twenty-two, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel and Public Ethics Positions in the Exempt Service.
All right, this is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. As you recall, we requested a hold on this bill. This is the companion bill to sixteen twenty-two. It is the position control portion of the reform. And so, as we want to make sure that it matches up with sixteen twenty-two, we ask that you hold this bill again until sixteen twenty-two passes.
May I have a motion to hold?
So moved, Allison Pickard.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold the vote on Bill number twenty-four dash twenty-two until April eighteenth.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hold Bill number twenty-four twenty-two until April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two has been adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number twenty-seven dash twenty-two.
Bill number twenty-seven twenty-two, An Ordnance Concerning Pensions, Contingent Anuitant, Fire and Police Service Retirement Plans, Same-Sex Marriage.
Thank you. And before we... Before I turn over the bill to administration, I'd actually like to be added as a cosponsor, and I believe Mr. Pruski has already been added as a cosponsor.
Same. Thank you. Allison Pickard, sponsor. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Barron, with that, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me is Ms. Bedowski and Ms. Lovett from Personnel, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer has graciously stuck around. So, twenty-seven twenty-two corrects an injustice within our pension policy that is a legacy of the previous prohibition on marriage equality. At its core, this is a matter of fairness and justice. The purpose of twenty-seven twenty-two is to allow retirees who are in our public safety pension plans, who retired before same-sex marriage became legal in Maryland, and who named their partner as their... And I'm going to try and say this right, contingent annuitant, and who subsequently married their partner to be restored to the equal benefit that they would have been entitled to had they been in a heterosexual couple. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions, but please pass this bill tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not going to repeat what the administration said, but this is long overdue. This has been going on for a while. We've had these discussions, and certainly there's been some state law, which we've been talking a lot tonight. But for all the people that have served our county, regardless of who you love, this is justice, and we're glad that it's being done, and thank you to everyone that worked to get this finally to where it is today. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments for my colleagues? All right. Madam Secretary, please read... Oh, sorry, we need to have a public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive anything from the public.
Thank you. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill number twenty-seven dash twenty-two. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I believe no one signed up ahead of time, but if there's anyone here who wishes to speak, please come up to the table, state your name and address for the record. And Mr. Shire.
Good evening. I'm Mike Shire, Chair of the County's Pension Oversight Commission. Just here representing the commission, you all have our letter that's in support of the bill. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was the shortest testimony of the evening.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Corporal... Retired Corporal Tom Yaminian, and I reside at three oh two Benfield Road, Severna Park, Maryland. And I personally want to thank everyone involved in this. I was retired in two thousand and nine medically. I would have still worked for the county, but I got injured in the line of duty, and they retired me. At that time, I had the opportunity to act as a mature adult, and I put my partner, who is now my spouse, we've been together for twenty years, as an annuitant, because that was the only thing that the county afforded me. In two thousand and thirteen, we were wed. She was provided medical benefits. I brought this back up again, and they told me at that point that my irrevocable annuitant was stand, period, end of discussion. So I really want to say thank you to all of you, to listening to this, to bringing this bill to fruition, and hopefully passing it this evening.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Any additional comments or questions? All right. This panel is dismissed, and if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this bill, he may come down now. Seeing none, the public hearing on Bill number twenty-seven dash twenty-two is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the bill... Read the title of Bill number twenty-seven dash twenty-two.
Bill number twenty-seven twenty-two, An Ordnance Concerning Pensions, Contingent Anuit... Did I pronounce that correctly?
Anuitant.
Anuitant. We were talking about S.A.T. words as well. Fire and Police Service Retirement Plans, Same-Sex Marriage.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number twenty-seven dash twenty-two.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number twenty-seven twenty-two is passed.
It's wonderful when we can see seven O votes on things like love. All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number twenty-eight dash twenty-two.
Bill number twenty-eight twenty-two, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel Positions in the Classified Service.
Mr. Barron, this is another administration bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sticking with me is Ms. Bedowski. We also have Ms. Rickers Atkinson from Personnel. We have Karen Henry from DPW. We have Deputy Chief Mayors, Captain Jordan, and Mayor Mullett from Detention also here. If there are any questions for them, you're welcome to join us at the table if you want, but happy to keep you in the audience if you need to. So what twenty-eight twenty-two does is it makes changes to positions within the classified service for fire and police communication operators. It increases minimum qualification to reflect robust training requirements, and importantly, increases pay grades. This will help... It's definitely not a silver bullet, but this will help to address some of our needs in our nine-one-one services. Under the detention, it creates a new class for a records clerk and makes some changes to titles. It... Current... There are thirteen current correctional record clerk positions. It's being decreased to twelve and adding a correctional clerk-to position. This new position will be a supervisory role, allow for greater employee growth, and hopefully address turnover. For DPW, we make some adjustments to minimum qualifications. Our folks are here. If you have any specific questions for them, but we ask that you move this bill tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Any comments or questions for my colleagues? All right. Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill number twenty-eight dash twenty-two. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive anything ahead of time.
We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill number twenty-eight dash twenty-two. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. We did not have anyone signed up ahead of time, but if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this bill, you may come down now. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill number twenty-eight dash twenty-two is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number twenty-eight dash twenty-two.
Bill number twenty-eight twenty-two, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel Positions in the Classified Service.
Any further discussion for my colleagues? I'll just say before I ask for the vote, thank you for doing this. You know, being able to recruit in these critical roles is obviously becoming more challenging in the days when all the boomers are retiring and, you know, people are not returning to the workforce since COVID. But I appreciate that the administration is taking this step to help, you know, bring, you know, encourage people to come into these fields. So with that, I hope everyone supports. And Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number twenty-eight dash twenty-two.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number twenty-eight twenty-two is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number twenty-nine dash twenty-two.
Bill number twenty-nine twenty-two, An Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget Supplementary
Again, this is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have Ms. McAllister from Budget and Lori Blair Klausmeyer, who has been with me the whole meeting, so... Twenty-nine twenty-two is an important bill. This is... This legislation makes supplementary appropriation of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for the Odenton Town Center Tax Increment Fund. This appropriation is made from the unappropriated fund balance of the TIF. This will allow us to align the operating budget with the two thousand and twenty-two capital budget program for the Mark TOD development. As you all know, the Mark station in Odenton needs some investment. That's what this was for. We're going to be building a garage and improving the area around the station. So with that, I want to thank Councilman Pruski for cosponsoring this. I know you've been an advocate of this project. May have been one of the first things you mentioned to me when I took this job. So glad to see this bill come forward. Hopefully, you will all vote for it.
Thank you. Any questions? Oh, Mr. Pruski.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I want to thank the administration also for moving this forward. For those of you that don't know, this garage is a few several miles from the largest employer in the state of Maryland, and that is Fort Meade. And if you haven't driven on one hundred thirty-two, ninety-seven, or ninety-five lately, people are no longer teleworking. The federal government is actually going back to work. So they're calling people back, and it's by agency, but there is going to be a great need, again, to improve our roads, our infrastructure, and that parking garage, which the base continues to grow. So it's well needed, and the people in the community will appreciate it, and hopefully we'll get a shovel on the ground sometime. But this is progress towards that. Thank you.
All right. At this time, let's have a public hearing on Bill number twenty-nine dash twenty-two. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public on this bill?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive anything ahead of time.
Thank you. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill number twenty-nine dash twenty-two. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. We did not have anyone sign up on this bill, but if there's anyone here who wishes to testify... All right. Seeing no one moving in the audience, the public hearing on Bill number twenty-nine dash twenty-two is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number twenty-nine dash twenty-two.
Bill number twenty-nine twenty-two, An Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget Supplementary Appropriations.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number twenty-nine dash twenty-two.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number twenty-nine twenty-two is passed.
Thank you. Is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? Seeing none, Madam... May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. No one... Any opposed? Motion carries. The county council is adjourned until April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two for our virtual county council work session. See you soon.